Foreign President, I call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. We would like to welcome the audience and thanks for attending. Viewers may watch Board of Education meetings and Board committee meetings live at TCAPS.net backslash board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. Please rise and join Ms. Jackson's third grade class from Westwood Elementary in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible,天地一統
The fast class today, so we appreciate and always enjoy the meetings. We are now at the review approval portion of the agenda. I do know that obviously we have to have one change to the agenda in regards to discussion for new board members. Is there any preference where we place that? I was gonna place it at the end of discussion, but if anyone has any strong feelings, that's fine. Alright, and that will become item E. Is there any other changes to the agenda?
Can I pull one thing off, Sam?
Yep.
And that is, and it's just because I have one question. The Capitol Project's facility storage. I just have one question on that one.
So this would be D, I, DI, D1, right?
Yeah, D1, first dot.
D1, D1, yeah, exactly. Yes, so we can pull that one item off. That, why don't we make that E? And we'll put the board member discussion to F. Any other changes? Okay, do I have a motion to approve as amended?
I move to approve the agenda as amended. I second.
Second? Alright, Tammy, please link out to Rockwell then.
Trustee Moon Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
And Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, moving on to recognition, define your document right now.
Okay, so tonight, the first item we have is our TCAPS Compass Award winners. And so I know we have a lot of excited folks and some well-deserved recognition. So I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to County Taylor, our Associate Superintendent, to introduce our Compass Award winners.
Thank you very much. For those of you who don't know, our Compass Awards were introduced this year to recognize individuals who demonstrate exemplary service for the district and also who promote our strategic plan and works of the district. And they are nominated by their peers, voted on by our union leadership. And it's my pleasure to introduce some individuals to you tonight and read just a little bit about each one of them. When I call your name, can you just please stand where you are? And then at the conclusion, when we've done all of the awards, we'll ask you to come forward. We can present you with a certificate and we'll do some photo ops if you don't mind. So we're gonna start off with our winner in the ASME. This is our Maintenance Custodial Group, Elburro Dimas. Elburro is a longtime facilities employee who has shown tremendous leadership qualities as a lead custodian. He's earned the respect of his fellow custodians and he works through hard work, honesty, and devoted customer service attitude. He works a tremendous amount of extra hours filling in gaps and needs, not just in the building at Montessori, but around the district as needed. He's really good with students, staff, and parents, and he's one of the most trusted allies in promoting TCAPS values that our community expects. During his employment, he's worked in several different buildings throughout the district and has helped many different staff with various custodial needs. He was instrumental during the move to the new building last year. His knowledge of district facilities and maintenance procedures has been beneficial as we build a new building administrator in a new building. He's always willing to step up and help out when we need something. He doesn't ask for anything in return and keeps a positive attitude. It's a joy to work with him. Next, we have for our transportation group, James Clare. And it said, "I had an opportunity to know James when working alongside him this last summer to become certified CPR instructor for the district." He volunteered to become CPR certified and then to take it one step further, he became a certified CPR instructor for TCAP staff. Now James is able to assist his department by leading CPR classes for other transportation staff to become certified in CPR, AED, and first aid. He's willing to step on and take on more to help TCAPS for great students, staff, and families. We all know how difficult the job it is to work in transportation and how admirable it is to go above and beyond for his colleagues. For our administrative group, Nate Kepler, Assistant Principal, Central High School. This is, "I'm pleased to nominate Nate Kepler. He exemplifies the qualities of an exceptional leader consistently demonstrating a deep knowledge and unwavering attention to detail, especially in the area of special education. His quiet confidence allows him to lead with clarity and conviction, earning the trust and respect of his colleagues and students alike. Nate's ability to build strong, meaningful relationships with both staff and students has been integral in fostering positive school culture. Through his detailed and empathetic approach to the IEP process, he has streamlined communications and facilitated a deeper understanding of each student's needs resulting in better outcomes for all. Additionally, Nate has played a key role populating and maintaining our peer tutoring program, recruiting and guiding students to support their peers. His efforts have recreated an environment where students are not only academically supported, but also fostered in a community of care and collaboration." Thank you, Nate. Next, for our non-affiliated support group, we have Angela, also known as Mama Tank Hicks. She is a full-year She is a full-year guest teacher and coach at East Middle School. Mama Tank is an Air Force veteran who decided to purposely serve the students of TCAPS. She's been one of our building guest teachers for the past three years. Although she's not a certified teacher yet, you wouldn't know it based on her ability to connect with students and guide them through their lesson. As one of the few Black TCAPS employees, she's an essential part of our school's ability to better represent our diversified community. No matter the situation, she jumps right in and makes the best of it. She is confident, intelligent, and a positive force. Mama Tank embodies the spirit of the strategic plan. She puts students first, she includes everyone, and she makes, she works to make sure everyone is successful. Several times, she has shown her leadership skills by initiating positive changes in our building. From aligning our guest teacher lesson plan binders to creating a debate club for students to getting our school pepped up with her motivational Mondays. She's always looking for ways for students to feel connected to East Middle School and feel better about themselves. Thank you, Mama Tank. Next, for our non-affiliated administrator, we have Erica Lotti, Director of Human Resources, AKA my right hand and sometimes left one too. Erica is not only a wealth of knowledge for all of TCAPS and HR for the district, she's an incredible leader and team player in the Human Resource Department and across the entire district. While Erica's worked at TCAPS and within the HR department for many years, she's always willing to learn, adapt, and grow her mindset and move things in a new direction if that's what's needed for the district and for TCAP staff. Her work ethic is unprecedented. She's the first to step up to take on roles and responsibilities to ensure HR services are seamless even when we're short-stacked. Erica's positive attitude and amazingly kind heart makes her one of the most incredible human beings I personally have ever had the good fortune to work alongside. Erica, thank you. Next, we have Michelle Perkins, Food Service Cook's Assistant, Traverse Heights Elementary. Michelle is one of the best associates I've had the pleasure of working with. She is tireless and never stops. With two Michelles in our kitchen, I started calling Michelle P. the boss because she was my go-to person for answers to any questions about the TCAP system. She can do it all. She's also the most organized and keeps everything spotless. When I first started as a kitchen lead last winter, Michelle supported me as I learned the ropes, always available to pitch in anywhere needed. TCAPS is lucky to have an employee so dedicated to their work, students, and team members. Working in an elementary cafeteria has challenges, but Michelle never loses her cool. She is firm but always patient and fair with our kids. She epitomizes time to lean, time to clean. I have never once seen her slack off at work. I wish I had half her stamina. If we have special projects, Michelle is the first to offer to come in early or stay late if needed. It's a pleasure to work with her, the boss. Michelle stays up to date on all food service training, nothing gets past her. She is vigilant in keeping things up to code. Our students can be confident their food will be safe as well as great to eat. She is a gem. Next, we have Tracy Walters, TCEA Capsa. Lead Administrative Assistant at Central Grade Elementary. Tracy Walters is more than just a lead administrative assistant at Central Grade School. She is the quiet glue that holds our historic building together, arriving first in the morning and often last to leave. She ensures the school runs safe, smoothly with her remarkable ability to multitask and handle any challenges with grace. She has a strong work ethic and exceptional time management. She is kind and approachable and is adored and appreciated by staff and students. Tracy shows great respect for all staff, students, and parents, and she works tirelessly to make sure all of their needs are met. She loves the staff and students as a main staple in our school's success. She puts in tireless hours in and out of the school building because she wants the school to be successful. She shows determination, kindness, grace, love to all who come in contact with her daily. Thank you, Tracy. And lastly, for our TCEA teacher group, we have Special Education Teacher, Kim Keldershaw. We are proud to recognize Mrs. Kim Keldershaw for her outstanding service, compassion, and leadership within our school community. Kim is a tireless advocate for students, consistently creating a kind, safe, and supportive environment where all students feel valued and empowered. Beyond the classroom, Kim is the heart of our staff community. She is the glue that holds us together, uplifting morale and fostering connection through her thoughtful coordination of staff gatherings and events. Her creativity and dedication shine in through her planning and beloved traditions like the Halloween spooky snacks, the chili cook-off, and after-school socials. Kim's commitment to service is truly selfless. Whenever covering classes, stepping in as a guest administrator, or supporting with IEPs, MDR, and parent meetings, she's always ready to help where she is needed most. She leads by example in embodying the spirit of collaboration, support, and care that defines our East Middle School family. Thank you, Kim, for all you do. Your work is not, does not go unnoticed and your impact is deeply appreciated. If all of our winners, I do, Mama Tank would like to say a word if you don't mind. She'd ask it, come on up.
Do you think we can get it one up there?
I'll keep it short, I'm not shy. No, what I found out, I'm first thanking for this opportunity and thanking for this honor. What I found out that I was getting this award, it made me think about the criminalism of the active-duty force and the reserve force in the Department of Defense in comparison to our permanent teacher force and our guest teacher force. And it just is, I feel like it's that time where we're getting ready to take it to the next level. Here's a perfect example I can think of, two times when our reservists had to really stand in and help carry the weight of the demand of the Department of Defense. This is now unclassified, but I was an intelligence analyst, I was stationed in Miami, and some of you are old enough to remember the early 2000s when we had hostages in Colombia. As an intelligence analyst in charge of a division, I was tasked with trying to help track them. While technology was not, hadn't boomed like it is now, cell phones before the flip phone was barely happening, and they were changing their SIM cards, so we're having a hard time. So we had to come up with a way and it required extensive research. We could leave target packages and they had to research it. And every Friday, like clockwork, I could leave, as a master sergeant in charge of this great mission, I could leave a target deck for our reservists and come in on Monday and know that it was done. We had that, that confidence because we had that cohesion. I feel like right now, the state of the Department of Education is at that crisis mode where it is time for our reservists, if you will, our guest teacher force, to step in and give you guys the support that you need. So I'm looking forward to tomorrow and maybe partnering up with how we can just make that happen as I'm the first sub to get this award. I'm excited about it and I don't take it lightly. So thank you so much, guys, and TCAPS, go TCAPS.
Thank you, let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you for all the award winners.
As, as everyone, don't, don't worry about rushing out. We'll, but we will start to move on to the next item, which is, oh, we're still in recognition with the presentation concessions.
We do. And so tonight, we have, I know, multiple students here, and so I'll kinda leave it with our principal, Joe Esper at West Senior High. We have, from West Senior High, Magnolia Zelwisky and Sophia Ware. And I know we have some students as well from Central High here as well with the Raptors. I believe robotics that I saw on the back. So a lot of our, our students that are STEM programs, so last week was a very, actually last couple weeks have been a very STEM-supported week with all of our robotics tournaments that kids have participated in and opening both of our Innovation and Manufacturing Centers. And so I know that there's a presentation that I know we have, so we'll go ahead and have our students with that, come on up and give their presentation.
Alright, Joe Esper, West Senior High, I'm just gonna introduce Mr. Myers, and he can introduce Magnolia and Sophia and explain a little bit about Innovation and Design Class. So Kel Myers is, teaches a number of classes in West Senior High, Computer Science, Innovation and Design, a little bit of math, a little bit of science, why isn't he certified? TCAP's graduate, not TCAP's graduate, but his first year back at TCAP's teaching after a number of years at Holy Law School. So I wanna introduce Mr. Myers. He can maybe give us two sentences about what Innovation and Design Class is. We have it at both high schools. It's one of the things that we'll, we'll run a lot of in the new spaces that we opened up last week. And then maybe introduce our two students, I know we're gonna say a few names.
I'm Kel Myers. I didn't expect to come up and speak, but but the Innovation and Design classes are meant to give students an opportunity to get out of their comfort zone and design their own projects and get into the things that they choose to enjoy. The idea is that they, at the beginning, they have the opportunity to learn all the different manufacturing, innovation, and design things that they might get into. And as they continue on through the course series, they get further and further into something that they choose that they really wanna focus on. These two students here are taking the first semester of the second course. And for the very first project, they are going to present some, I won't take too much of what they're gonna say, but they're gonna present some projects with some of the first things that, that they did heading down that journey towards the things that they have the most interest in. And this is Magnolia and Sophia. I'll let them take it from there.
We have to talk.
Hello, we are some of West High School's Innovation Design students. We made some gifts for each of you from our second semester's first project. We wanted to thank you guys for allowing us to be here and have the big space to work in. We appreciate being able to finish these in the IMC.
Why don't you grab a, grab one or two? Fortunately, they have name tags, so we just have to mash.
I think that one's hair.
Oh, so cool.
Sorry, it was just ended up being a board member. It's easier with the names on the front. Oh, thanks.
Very cool.
Is that for Josie? She's not here today.
So cool, these were made with 3D printers? Is that what I'm guessing on these?
Yes, most of them.
Very good.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
I also know we have some of our Raptors team. If you guys just wanna come up quick and just say hi and maybe as a representative, just talk quick about the season. And Mentor can come up too.
We are the Traverse City Central Raptors Robotics Team, and we are just here to express our gratitude for this new space that'll allow us to expand our mechanical operations in a totally new way with 3D printing labs, the CNC cutters. All of that will really help our team advance in our mechanical journey.
Yeah, for years, we have basically had like a small room in the back of the school to kind of work and complete our projects over the seasons. So it's really such a great thing to have now this designated space that we can work and really thrive to our fullest potential as a robotics team. So we are so grateful to the Educational Board for allowing us to practice in there.
Well, it's, it's well-billing the full program raise outreach events that we do, such as Super Science Saturday for the community, so we can have that space to host them in now to give elementary schools the opportunity to experience it.
Just wanna say thank you, guys, for all you do. Thank you.
Who knows, Ed, do we have any other groups of our STEM groups? I do know that our West, a lot of our West kids right now are getting ready for the world competition of our robotics team at West Senior High, and a lot, first group leaves tomorrow for Houston. And then Wednesday, the second group will go, so they are feverishly, I know, over in the IMC right now at West High School. I'm trying to button up, I think, in fact, I think the robot leaves tonight if I remember right. So they are, they're gearing up for that. And both teams, both the Raptors and the Titans teams, won awards at the state competition, were recognized. So great seasons for both, and again, fabulous program. We thank all of again, fabulous program, we thank all of the mentors, and parents, and staff that, that work with our students in those programs, and, uh, again, it's just been, last three weeks have been awesome STEM weeks for us in the district, and just so excited what the future holds for all of our kids in, uh, in a, in a school district, so again, uh, we could give them all one big round of applause.
Just a shout out, I think there's a grandma and a grandpa of a West robotics student who are actually driving the robot in a trailer, um, down to the competition, so the kids can fly, so shout out to grandma and grandpa, I think they've been doing it for the past three years, so pretty cool.
Very cool.
So, and, yes, thank you, everyone, and it was exciting last week to see the new facilities, and, uh, hopefully that should, uh, ensure that we can bring home the worlds, right, this, uh, this next week, so.
They're appearing for it, I can promise you that.
But hopefully it does, uh, continue to help, uh, develop our program for sure, so thank you for everything. The final, we do have a final recognition today, um, which I didn't know how to really handle, because quite frankly, it's nothing we can decide as a board outside of a board meeting, but, uh, the recognition is obviously for our trusty Holly, Holly Byrd, um, and obviously it was an emotional time for the past few weeks, uh, like, when we actually had the executive committee to set the agenda and added the item, uh, it was obviously the day that we had heard, so, um, I think what I really would like to do is, is probably, obviously, express anything that any board member would like to say, probably set up something in the future for a formal recognition that's culturally appropriate, that we can take our time and find out, I didn't feel like it was appropriate to really ask many questions in the last couple of weeks, so I did not come with any, uh, formal, uh, recognition or proposal, um, but that's what I would like to do, and, and the board to give myself and Dr. Van Wijnaldum the ability to do that at a later time, and when we can, uh, know what the best, uh, a good way to do it would be. So that, again, anyone can say anything now, uh, as well, um, yeah, I know that it's, uh, it was a shock to our system and, and a surreal experience, it still had, I think, fully sunk in for me, and, and I appreciate it, and one thing I've told everyone is, regardless of what you think you knew about her, uh, she was a wide-ranging, uh, person who had ability to really talk to anyone, uh, regardless of, of belief, and bring people into a, a better commonplace. Um, it was a rare, a rare quality, um, so she will be missed.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, I didn't know Holly, um, before she ran for the board, and, um, um, I instantly, um, feel her passion for children, and just her dedication to our community, and, um, her service on curriculum and finance, and the sustainability committee, um, amazing board member that just always had such a positive, calm demeanor, um, she will be so dearly missed, just super.
Again, no one has to say anything, I just wanted to, at least, we had this on, and, uh, anyone they want to, they're welcome to, um, but we will, as I said, come back with a, a different proposal at a later date, um, again, with the blessing of the board for us to do that. Okay. Thank you. Uh, so we will now move on to public comment, um, the board has set aside this time for public comment, and individuals addressing the board shall one of the twenty to speak, each other one day with three minutes. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system, and we strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including a complaint process, are outlined in Board Policy 2504.
Linda Racine.
My name is Linda Racine, 3700 Jefferson, like so many others, I was starting to hear about Holly Byrd, I served on the statewide clean energy committee with her, and she was such a passionate steering team member, deeply committed to sustainability, contributing in so many ways, and it's a huge loss for our community. Related to sustainability, I'd like to comment on agenda ideas focused on district building renovations. I understand there's been some enthusiasm for making Central Grade a potential showcase for clean energy and sustainability in the world. Our church is completing a project, much smaller scale, obviously than Central Grade, but a big project for us, and where we've replaced an ancient boiler with an all-ometric heat pump, upgraded lighting, and installed solar panels, and we've learned a couple of important things, first is that assumptions can be absolutely wrong. We were told that a gas boiler was the only good option, that geothermal or under-heat pumps would be way too expensive, but one of the numbers anyway, and so, while we found that geothermal wasn't practical for our site, no one was more surprised than the engineering firm managing our bidding process, where the cost for an air-to-water heat pump came, and the gas-fired boiler were all the same. And heat pumps can be a lot more ingenious, so, and the other thing that we learned is that when you're doing the right thing, for the right reasons, people want to help. Church members were so committed to reducing carbon pollution, they opened their checkbooks, received a very generous grant from Traverse City Light and Power's community investment fund, were eligible for rebates on the principal lighting project, and found very low interest loan to cover the rest. This seems realistic, of being able to cover that through savings from our energy bills, so, even though clean energy tax credits are a question mark right now, we're hoping for those, too, I encourage you to stay the course, there's some, there's some very creative solutions out there, thank you.
Emmerick D.
Good evening, my name is Emmerick D., and it is, uh, my privilege to work with the amazing choir students at West Middle School. I'd like to start with a quote from Mr. Fred Rogers, when he addressed the US Senate regarding funding for Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood. He said, "This is a philosophical statement, and would take about ten minutes to read, so I'll not do that. One of the first things that a child learns in a healthy family is trust. And I trust, what you've said, that you will read this, it is very important to me, I care deeply about children." While we, uh, myself, on behalf of the TCAP's music department staff, have responded over the past year to your requests for needs with extensive documentation detailing the improvements and increases to our facilities for our deserving students, because we too care deeply about children. I trust that you have read and will thoroughly reread and reconsider the details in the documents that we have provided. In brief, in the current proposal, the West Middle School building has been allotted approximately $2 million, mere 1% of the bond money we were asked to work hard to ensure voters knew would have a significant impact on the music facilities throughout TCAP's. While $2 million may sound exciting, and is definitely a lot of money, the current proposal does not even increase the square footage allotted to the music department at West Middle School. It simply restructures the current footprint, while eliminating a much-needed fourth teaching space. With approximately 70% of all students enrolled in music classes, the West Middle School music program is thriving and growing. Our building is incredibly outdated, insufficient, and not even ADA compliant in some places. We are desperately in need of additional rehearsal and storage space for the increasing size of the programs. I believe the ideal solution would be a new 2,000-square-foot addition. A new 40-by-50-foot space would be perfect for a choir room fit to accommodate classes of 75-plus students, which we have in our current enrollment. In the proposal for Central High School, there is a new addition of a 2,000-square-foot choir room, which makes perfect sense, and they're very deserving of that new space. The facilities at Central High School are very similar to West Middle School currently, and I just wonder why wouldn't we build the same thing at West Middle School. The West Middle School Choir is part of the TCAP's flagship music department, has an enrollment of nearly 350 students next year. Please don't miss this opportunity to support these incredible students with the 21st century learning space that they deserve. In response to Mr. Rogers' appeal for increased funding, Senator Bastori said, "Looks like you just earned the $20 million." I sincerely hope that the TCAP's music department will receive equitable funding for these projects, including essential new construction, to expand and enrich our student's dreams for generations to come. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Peg Siciliano.
Hi, good evening, my name is Peg Siciliano, a TCAP's parent from 1992 to 2014. I am in my 10th year of working at TCAP's as an ESL assistant. I have followed the recent discussion over the role of the TCAP's board closely. Having served on several nonprofit boards myself, and having worked as a direct report to a board, I do understand the difference between policy and working boards, and I do understand that you have a, a policy board. Nevertheless, I am here to say that I feel TCAP's, as an organization that prides itself in its transparency, should encourage board members to ask any and all questions they feel unnecessary, especially as the board is directed to approve the budget. In watching your meetings, I've heard repeated at least twice that board members should trust that the policies they have set are being properly implemented by TCAP's staff. My experience at TCAP certainly shows that TCAP's employees are hardworking and dedicated. However, I have also learned that even well-meaning people can accidentally overlook things, or fail to embrace new ideas that would bring improvement to the system, such is true in any human institution. Also, we all understand that the administration is literally bombarded with requests for improvements, so it is important that voices outside of the administration advocate for actions they feel need to be taken. This is why it is necessary that TCAP's pay particular attention to students and families that may not have the wherewithal to speak for themselves. This will include many, of course, not all, but many families from economically disadvantaged backgrounds. Some of these families, for a multiplicity of reasons beyond their control, do not understand the system, or are often so busy just surviving, that they do not have the time to take, to be able to actively voice their concerns. Hence, I support board members who are advocating for an even deeper look into the services given such groups. Highly attending board members are one of the safeguards that can make sure that anything that has been overlooked can be corrected as quickly as possible. I also support that TCAP strive not just to match state averages in the disparities between disadvantaged students and other students, but actually strive to do better than average. The fact that this is a policy board actually supports the idea that board members should seek a very detailed set of, um, information and facts, and that they should advocate that money be sent as close to learning activities as possible. Because the truth of the matter is, accepted policy is only efficiently implemented when it is properly staffed and funded. That said, I know you all work extremely hard to make the district as efficient and as high-achieving as possible, and I thank you for that.
Tim Warner.
Hi, Tim Warner, proud parent to Central High School graduates, um, just a quick note of encouragement to everybody up here, uh, in regards to Central Grade School, um, really repeating what Linda Racine had said, but, uh, do the math, uh, as far as decarbonization and sustainability, and I'm not asking you to do the math, but ask your architects, engineers to do the math, and then have somebody take a really critical look at it, kick the tires, if you will, uh, we have excellent folks at Traverse City Light and Power, we have excellent folks in our community at places like Keen, um, have them ask the tough questions, like actually get them in the room with them, uh, sit down, ask the tough questions, uh, and if it doesn't make sense, it doesn't make sense, but if you do the math, I think there's an excellent chance it'll make sense, and, uh, the more energy efficient it is, uh, the more money that you save on utilities that you could put into the classroom.
Scott Richards.
Scott Richards, Scott Richards, Green Lake Township, um, sorry that Holly Byrd passed away, but we all have that date with death, it's coming sooner or later, and, um, that's why I believe in this book. This is God's holy word, and was the first textbook in the colonies. This was the first textbook in the schools, it's God's holy word. I wonder where we would be right now if we left this in the textbooks in the schools. I think school crime would be down, I think, uh, all this gender confusion, oh, first of all, sorry, those two people that spoke a couple of months ago, I'm still praying for you, okay? And I think a lot of schools are dealing with a lot of broken families, and if people read God's Word and prayed together, and hugged each other, and kissed each other, I think they'd have a better chance to stay together. These books that are in the school libraries at TC West and TC Central, Gender Queer, All Boys Aren't Blue, Oxycrack, um, these books don't need to be in the schools, they're under 18 years old, you don't need to be looking at this stuff. All it's gonna do is blue your eyes, and get you in a lot of pain, sin is pain, that's what that is, and, and at least my book. And the other thing is, I hope all the young people in here will look up the story of Jordan DeMaye, of Marquette, Michigan, Jordan DeMaye of Marquette, Michigan, I wonder if he writes some of these books, I wonder if that's what got him in trouble. Listen, you need to teach these kids Psalms 139 and 14, you are fearfully and wonderfully made, and these people are made in God's image, we don't need to discourage that, thank you.
Susannah Tobin.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Tobin, I live at 502 West Street. I first want to appreciate the opportunity that you gave, and the many opportunities that you gave the public leading up to last summer's bond, there were plenty of opportunities for the public to share their opinions on what was important to us, and I think a lot of people showed up, and I think they spoke up, and I appreciate that you listened. Um, I think that, one of the things I care most about is that you listened to the people and how much they feel strongly about the Central Grade School as a presence in the Traverse City world of the very few buildings we have that are historical, and it's part of Traverse City's history, and keeping it from being demolished, and in fact, not just keeping it from being demolished, but actually leaning into renovating it is a giant win for everyone. Mostly, it's a giant win for the students, and I think this really is a perfect opportunity to practice as many, um, sustainable, uh, efforts to go into having this building be something that the children can learn from, and thrive in while they're here, and then after they're gone. This leads me to my appreciation for Holly Byrd. When I was working with the environmental groups last year to have the board members pass a resolution for electrification for all facility upgrades, she encouraged the students to not give up, and in fact, she, uh, persisted with the proposal of creating a sustainability committee in lieu of the resolution, she thought that would be more impactful and more widespread for the whole TCAP's, um, world to have a, a plan to move forward with, not just a box to check, but to actually see it through in a way that was meaningful for years to come. And her leadership and conviction, uh, as I remember, it passed unanimously, the board voted to create this committee, and that committee, uh, consists of students and other people from the community, and I'm one of those people from the community, and I think it's already having a really positive impact on creating a sustainability action plan that would be, and will be equitable for all schools in the system, and something that can be student-led, and it, I feel that it's very inspiring, and I think we all have Holly Byrd to thank for that, so, thanks.
Woody Smith.
Hello. Three quick notes of gratitude. I love the Compass Awards. I think everybody does. And what a great thing to do to remind us all of the incredible teachers and staff that are working in our buildings and with our kids every single day. That extends to the Board of Education. So thank you, all of you. And I love just, you know, kind of giving visibility to the good work that everybody's doing. School buses in our school cafeterias, kind of all throughout, all of it, and it's great. Second note, yes, I mean, we've been thinking about, we all have been thinking about Holly a lot and what our community has lost. What an incredible person on every possible level. You know, with such a good heart and an open heart and a, you know, real sense of conviction for the things that she was passionate about. And I know that you all are hurting as well. So I just couldn't imagine being in another place to kind of continue this grieving process other than here. And then I wanted to just kind of support again, as you think about facilities in general. I appreciate how thoughtful you've been about balancing, making sure that we are keeping our kids safe, making sure that they have all of the opportunities to learn that they need in the 21st century. It's very exciting, the moves to support technology and innovation that have been going on in our public schools. And as Dr. Van Wagner said, three weeks of, you know, really exciting STEM news. But our personal experience is that our kids, you know, got everything that they needed from TCATS. And that includes the arts, that includes the values, that includes the love of community and all the things that we really want in our kids. So I appreciate all of that. With those facilities and as you think about Central Grade School, I will reiterate what has already been shared, that using electricity as a way of heating and cooling, as a way of heating water, as a way of preparing food is, can be very cost efficient. It certainly can bring down operational costs. It can improve indoor air quality. The nice thing about electric heat pumps is that they both heat and cool. So when we get into the warmer months, I know that seems like we're never gonna get there, but when we do, it can be a very efficient way of cooling buildings. So all reasons to kind of continue to look at that seriously as you plan the future. Thank you.
Bill Weisner.
Bill Weisner, Traverse City. And yes, I agree, Holly Byrd will be sorely missed. She was, one thing, seemed like she worked right up until recently. To be going through that is so admirable to keep with her task because she believed in it so much. I went to one of the meetings, the Thursday night meetings, where just a few adults usually come. Hopefully, some of the kids would come or people from all different viewpoints come to those meetings. But she was so cordial and pleasant and just like she is around here. So she's very dedicated to her cause and should be. She will be loved and missed very much. As far as, I speak on the books again too. Here's a handout for TakeBackTheClassroom.com. 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 It's got a list of all books throughout the whole country, basically. Almost all of the school districts in Michigan. And it lists all of the sexually explicit books in all the different schools. It lists all TCATS, lists all Harbor Springs, you know, anywhere in Michigan. And, but you find out, find out which pornographic books are in your child's school at TakeBackTheClassroom.com. Pornographic books have infiltrated classrooms and libraries for the purpose of getting grooming our children under the guise of education. It's time to take back control. And here's another flyer from that. All at the Take Back Classroom. And you see the birdcage with the brain in it. Okay? Pornographic books have infiltrated classrooms and libraries for the purpose of grooming the children under the guise of education. It's time to take back control. Search your school. Schools nationwide carry books and graphic sexual content harming children's brain development and normalizing sexually explicit material. Early exposure rewires the brain, leading to increased risk of addiction, distorted views of relationships and long-term mental health struggles. And on that website, you'll see, here's TCATS. And for the elementary schools, Blair Elementary, Cortade, East, well, Montessori School, Silver Lake Elementary and Traverse Heights Elementary. The most books were at Central High School, 119. All sexually explicit. None of them should be in the schools. And also go to my website, TCfamily.org. Find the 38 books that I've got listed on there. And it gives descriptions of the books, excerpts from the books. Please hire someone.
Thank you, Mr. Weisner. Your time is up. Thank you.
Sexually explicit information to the kids.
Brandy Ekren.
Hi, thank you. My name's Brandy Ekren. I'm the executive director of Traverse City Light and Power and actually a proud mother of Traverse City West, seventh grader, and a proud mom of a TC Central grad. So happy to be here in front of you. But really, I want to talk with you in my role and capacity as the executive director for TC Light and Power. Dr. Van Wagner is a great advocate of holding me accountable for ensuring that there are some financial incentives as you work towards your planning with your facilities and your infrastructure. And I know today you're gonna get an update on Central Grade School. And one of the things I wanted to be able to share and maybe echo some of my other fellow board members is that there are incentives at TC Light and Power that are encouraged to help you with your decision-making. My board has recently increased our investment in clean energy programs, which includes financial incentives to incentivize heat pumps to make it more cost-effective as you're comparing apples to apples, so to speak. And there's clearly, you guys are better experts than I and you probably know what the research is in terms of air quality, lighting with children. It may have special, I would say, I don't wanna say the special needs, because I think my son might fall in that category, but certainly thrives under better lighting, so to speak. And again, I just want to encourage you to take advantage of our programs. We have excellent resources. Like I said, Dr. Van Wagner does a good job of holding me accountable on that. But I am happy to report, as we've just approved at least our board budget at our level, we'll be going to the city commission in the next month or so to know that. We're here to try to help support you in your decision-making. So that's all I had to add. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. That's the end of public comment. A great segue into the superintendent report. I'll turn to Dr. Wagner.
Okay. So tonight, we have some great presentation we'll start out. So we have architect updates for Central High School, our music projects and Central Grade. And so I'm gonna go hand it over to our assistant superintendent, Christine Damasill, to introduce them and have that presentation.
All righty. So I'm gonna ask Tracy, Mark and Jack to come up for the first two capital project presentations. So to start off with kind of where we're at, all three projects are still in discovery phase. We haven't started design phase just yet. We very quickly realized that there are some decisions that need to be made at a high level before we can move on to actual design phase for all three of these projects. So we thought, come on up here. I have seats and name tags for you. Ready to go.
There's name, there's name print, so.
And you're actually in the right order, so come on over. Thank you. Anyway, just talking about some, we're at a crux where we need some high-level decisions made and some opportunities discussed as to whether or not we have some options on each one of the programs. And so that's what we're here to do tonight. I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, but this is our team working on Central High School and secondary music projects. We'll start with Central High School, but I'll let them introduce themselves.
Okay. My name is Tracy Ezel. I'm an architect and project manager with TMP Architects out of Kalamazoo.
Mark Hummels with Cornwall Architects, local architect working with TMP and Miller Davis.
Jack Abadi with Miller Davis as the construction manager.
All right. So now that we have introductions, I'm gonna get into some of what we've been discussing with our user group. So I'm having clicker issues, so bear with me. It's a little bit slow. For Central High School, we have a user group made up of the athletic director, the principal at Central High School, a coach and a teacher, as well as the design team and construction management firm. So we've been working on the premise of a $20 million budget for the capital bond plan to deal with the items underneath renovation, addition, demolition. So improving ADA access, main office, secure entry, one-point entry. So we're separating daily activities from after-school events. Dealing with some gym capacity issues and trying to get more gym space available. Renovations to wrestling and locker rooms. So with that being said, we started talking about budget and timeline. And it became very clear that we have a lot of constraints and a lot of decisions we need so that we can move forward on what it might look like. One of the biggest constraints related to this project particularly is the constraint that we're assuming we have to operate the existing gym while we're doing construction, which inherently means we're going to have to have phases of the project that will increase the cost and the timeline. So I'm gonna just get started with an overall kind of footprint of Central High School, quite large, as you know, several different buildings. We've worked overtime to enclose the building so that we have some inside access, but there's a lot of use during the day in and out of the buildings and a lot of exterior doors. But I will just focus for the point of this discussion on the areas that we're really talking about. We're talking about the 1958 original competition gym. We're talking about the 1968 gym on the plans. It's actually called the auxiliary gym. I think the staff calls it the small gym. And then we have on the plans what's identified as a small gym, which is not a gym that is the correct size to actually play games on. So working with these spaces and then we have the current main office. So as we started to discuss the different gyms and the spaces, the goal was to try to get four gyms that actually could be used for play and practice. And currently, they're really operating with two. They can practice in the small gym, but you couldn't hold a game there because of the way that the lines are and not enough ball zone. So with that being said, I'm going to kind of show some of the things that we've been discussing and kind of just kick off the conversation. I'm hoping it's going to be an interactive conversation with board members. We've really been trying to look at, if we're going to maintain these spaces while we're starting construction, that clearly is an addition. One of the things that we really started to explore was whether or not any of the gyms that are listed here could potentially be up for demolition and what impact that could have as far as cost, timing and opportunity. We have a lot of constraints with the 1958 gym and the 1968 gym. So I'm gonna ask them just to kind of give you an overview of the 1958 gym and some of the constraints as the way the structure is built as we talk about potentially renovating it or demolishing it. And again, no decision had been made. This is just a big topic of conversation we felt like we needed to have at the board level. So if you guys can just give an overview of some of the constraints with the 58 gym, that would be helpful.
Okay. Well, upon my first visit to Traverse City Central and walking in the gym, my first impression was, wow, this is the movie Hoosiers and I love it. But the deeper we got into it, listening to the goals that needed to be achieved, both programmatically so that the school can function for PE and other educational purposes and athletically, with the amount of teams that you have, the extended practice times, the ability to hold a game at the same time that another group is practicing, the challenges in that gym became quite evident. If you're familiar with the gym, it's a lower bowl. That bowl is sunken below grade, so automatically you have a handicap issue to get there. An elevator was added at some point. It's not in the most, I would say, accessible or usable location. It doesn't really gain you real good access to your amenities, such as restrooms and concession stands and so forth, and creates a real point of congestion at that point or at that place. You also notice that you've got lower bowl bleachers that pull out from the wall, which is typical, we've all grown up with those. But you also have an upper bowl that is made of concrete tiers that hold the remainder of your seating. So the first idea is, well, can we take the walls that surround the court, move those out so that we can gain two practice floors in that facility? It became quickly evident, one, those hold up those upper bleachers, so now it's not just renovating the court. It would be renovating that entire upper bleacher piece. That is all reinforced concrete, quite challenging to manipulate or try to edit those components. Also, the only way that we could expand it and make it work, take away the corridors of the lower level. So now the lower level would completely have to be reconfigured and that's all masonry construction. There's a lot of plumbing down there. You know, a lot of mechanical is built into those concrete structures as well so that when you try to increase capacity of airflow to meet current building codes, now your chases have to get bigger and some things. So just constructability-wise, to try to renovate the space, although not impossible, is a little bit of a challenge. We did realize that a lot of the mechanical that needs to be changed out to meet current codes is hidden deep within the building. If you've been in the building, there's a ceiling that goes across the bottom of a bowstring truss. You've got a lot of ductwork up there. To actually renovate that stuff means taking down that entire ceiling, lighting systems, everything that's supported offhead ceiling. So it's a quite substantial amount of work to renovate that building to what I would consider current codes and current standards of usability and playability. Let some others chime in on the comments.
Thanks, Tracy. My main comment would be the global location of the gym within the building and its relationship to the student parking on the north side of the building. Right now, the east entrance to the gym facility is the main entrance for students. It drives a lot of traffic through the building. It's really tough to achieve that single point of entry with admin supervision with the way the gym is located relative to the main office right now. It's not a real specific comment relative to the 58 gym construction, but it is how it sits within the whole facility and how the students flow through the building is a real challenge right now.
So with that being said, we've had a lot of discussion within our user group and some are pretty passionate about renovating the existing gym and some are passionate about trying to start over. The ADA concerns, we had been talking about all along during the bond plan to solve those issues. You can still solve those issues with elevators and ramps. One of the questions I had was, is that what we're looking for going forward? Are we looking to bring that to grade and get rid of those ADA issues? So we have two buildings here, the 68 and the 58 gym, that are both below grade that would take extensive work to either raise the floor and deal with the outside spaces or demolish it. So one of the things I asked the team to do was to give me some cost estimates so that we know what we're talking about. And cost is obviously not the only factor. We still have the conversation around phasing. So if we're going to continue to operate that gym and we're going to keep it in place and renovate it, where will the students go for a year or two in construction mode for daily operations? So that's also another constraint as it relates to phasing, is where we're operating our gym classes during the day if that is renovated. Here I have, this is actually set up to be very interactive. And again, it's a draft to show you what we've done. We have high-level estimates for each category. And then we have a phasing assignment to it, which can be changed, obviously, just by clicking the dropdown menu and you can make your adjustments that way. I'm gonna skip to the next page and then I'm gonna go through detail. This is the net construction cost. And the second page gives you your total project cost, which includes your A and E fees, design and construction estimates as it relates to contingencies. Those are high right now because we haven't started design. We have some escalation costs simply because we would be doing some construction in the future and we assume some rates will go up. This does not include any cost estimates if there were other things to take place as far as high inflation or tariffs. Obviously, this is just what we know now. And this has been for concept purposes only. Again, we have no design started just yet. This was really to talk to the group about priorities and how we wanna move forward with the conversation with the board. We've laid this out in phases for a couple of different reasons. For one, when we look at the phasing of this project and this the music project is also somewhat similar, when we look at the phasing and the work that needs to be done, it's a multi-year project. I'm not confident everything would be completed before we're in front of the community for our next bond anyway, just simply because of those transitions. Um and the other thing, just to talk to the board about as it relates to bonding, um we are projected right now to uh go below our three point one mills as early as twenty thirty, which means we could go back out for an authorization as early as twenty twenty-eight. So I say that at a high level just to show that as we have multi-year projects, I believe with Central High School, we can still meet the original intended budget that was designed by setting priorities, but I think there's a second layer of work that would need to be done based on decisions that would be made and what priorities we'd like to accomplish overall for the whole entire site. So that's kind of why I'm lazing laying it out in two phases, maybe the start to a conversation about the next bond and what work could continue. Again, things are not necessarily in in the phase that maybe they're going to be, it's for talking purposes only. So I'm gonna go back, um and we're just gonna talk about some cost estimates. So, um in in many of the phases, we're looking at site development as it relates to just our our groundwork we need to do. I did ask for a cost estimate of a new competition gym as a new addition. Um that new competition gym, six point seven million is actually two courts. So you could hold your competition gym with all your bleachers, but you actually have two courts instead of the one we have in the current nineteen fifty-eight gym.
That's new constr- new construction.
Yep. Well, that's up for discussion, we we have some thoughts, but that's up for discussion. Again, we haven't decided, um we haven't done design just yet, we we need some high level decisions made so we know how to move forward. But we've got a lot of options as to where it could go.
Cause if it goes in the parking lot area, then that kicks the parking lot to another, yeah.
Yep.
So.
Um so just looking at some other items, uh the cost to demo the nineteen fifty-eight gym is three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And if you go a little bit further down, the renovations for the nineteen fifty-eight gym is six million. So when you look at a total comparison of a new competition gym that gives you two courts, it's really six point seven plus three seventy-five for the demo of the old, so you're looking at um seven million dollars for two courts versus renovating the existing gym that you can't get two courts in for six million. So that's kind of one of the very first things that we need to talk about with the board as to what direction we would be going in because you can see that it makes a big difference on budget and quali- uh quantity of gyms and helps us determine where everything would be placed.
Can you talk about the other two gyms really quick? So if you tore down the existing competition gym and then rebuilt it for the six, seven forty-five, um you'd have two. So the other two gyms, they still use those though, uh you can't you can't have competition in the one, the small gym.
Right.
And the nineteen sixty-eight.
Is the aux and you could, correct? You can have competition in that gym, yes.
So the nineteen sixty-eight gym, the floor, the basketball court floor is regulation size and meets the state of Michigan requirements. The perimeter area around it, the clearance between the wall or the bleachers and the sidelines don't meet. Um the amount of bleachers that you have in there wouldn't accommodate a varsity or JV level game. I knew, I know, talking to the athletic director that on occasion they do hold freshman competitions in there, but your spectator uh volume is much, much less. So, during a lot of our planning, we've continued to consider that as a practice floor, but not a competition floor. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, and and that one is also below grade. So, um talking about the overall goal of the ADA improvements, are we eliminating them or are we making improvements? And that's kind of one of the decisions we'd like to talk about moving forward.
And then one other question, so compared to West, right, if we're trying to be equal across town, then the other two gyms plus the two, if you rebuilt it from the ground up, how does that compare to what West currently has?
They, I believe they would be one less because this current small gym, you can't hold games because there's no fall zone. Is that accurate compared to the small gym at West Senior High? Yes, I'm getting a nod from Justin.
Okay.
So they would be one less than West if we stopped there.
Okay, so with the two competition gyms plus the other two gyms, okay.
Yeah, we'd be minus one that they could actually play like freshmen could can't play a game in the small gym.
Okay.
Because there's not the correct fall zone.
Okay, got it.
So, that's why we have some other cost estimates as well. Um we have cost estimates for building um one extra brand-new facility for a gym. It wouldn't be a competition gym with the full flede- full-fledged bleachers, but it would be comparable to the existing aux gym. And so, um that would be, where am I at?
Two point three, two point four.
Two point three, almost two point four million for a new one-court gymnasium. For a two-court gymnasium, it would be four point six. So again, these are all numbers that we're taking into consideration as we're looking at phasing, how many gyms we wanna end up at and what we want to do as far as ADA. We also have a cost estimate for the demo of the nineteen sixty-eight auxiliary gym, again, because it is below grade and that's five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Um in the majority of our planning and working with the user group meeting, um the user group um uh participants, in all of our scenarios, we're recommending renovating the small gym, what is on the plans, the small gym for wrestling. So that's the end goal, as far as phasing goes, I'm not really sure where that's gonna land until we have some greater direction as it relates to demo and ADA.
I'm s- I'm confused, so the new two-court PE gym and then the new one-court PE gym, what is that? In in addition to the floor that we're kind of talking about?
It it depends, so um let's just say in a scenario, the board approves the demo of the existing fifty-eight. We could do a new competition gym somewhere around that, not in its place because it has to operate. And that new competition gym, meaning you have enough seating for spectators, would have two courts. And that's much higher because you would have seating for spectators, some locker rooms and some ancillary spaces needed for a competition gym. Then if we were to talk about after demoing that, if we wanted to add one or two new gyms to get them to four in its place, we have that opportunity and those are the cost estimates. Because that would now be gone and it still would be all connected in the same area.
I gotcha, okay.
And again, that would be the phasing, however long it takes to build the new, then demo and then build another one or two depending on how the board wanted to go.
Okay.
And it would be a recommendation recommendation of two if we wanted to completely solve the ADA and demo the sixty-eight in the future. If we don't, we could just do one, that's why we have two cost estimates.
Got it.
Trying to get them to four where they could actually play games in four gyms.
Got it, okay, so what, yeah, and wrestling and to put wrestling then in the small gym.
And then and then the main office. Um obviously, with all that would be going on with the gyms, we would need to maintain the main current main office as is until we get to a completed stage and know where we're gonna land. So we can actually put the main office over by the new facilities so that we have that one point of entry and make a connection to the instructional classrooms so that um you can enter and go one way for athletics and one way for the daily operations in the main office.
Christine, I have a a question and maybe I'm coming late to the party, but this sort of starts with the premise that we need to replace these gyms. We need to do something dramatic, twenty million dollars worth of something. What's the rationale for doing this in the first place? Is this a life safety issue, is this a capacity issue, is this? I mean, what's the nuts and bolts of something that we're gonna spend twenty million dollars on that's not an instructional space?
So, uh I believe it is instructional space because we do have PE classes during the day.
Did you say gym is not instructional?
Just saying, it's not for education.
The premise started with safety and security, so we do have bleachers there that absolutely need to be replaced and brought. We have bleachers in there that absolutely need to be brought up uh to code. Um and any renovation would um require that. Um but it's also all of the constraints they have in the existing gym. They only have the one floor. Um for ADA access, it's very difficult for people to access where they need to go, like Tracy was saying, you come in on one side. However, the restrooms are somewhere else, concessions, everything that they need to access with that within the facility is very unfriendly. Um if you have um ADA concerns, uh so that kind of started the conversation as it relates to that. But then also the need for more gym space and the conflict we have with how late they're running games and practices because they simply can't get in there. And we were fortunate to be able to add a competition size at Montessori and I I know they use it on a daily basis. So that really led the charge, the ADA concerns are a a big concern. The elevated uh elevator needs updates, the bleachers need updates, it lead led to the conversation around, well, what are we gonna do with solve all the other problems?
Yeah, I think that was that was part of the problem too, is even if you left it, as is, the maintenance costs.
Yeah, systems aren't working.
Even just the things that are broken was several hundred dollars, so there's no zero point.
Well, it's just, it'd be nice to sort of see a business plan proposal where we're going to spend X amount of dollars, we're gonna increase capacity, we're gonna save on maintenance cost or we're gonna avoid the ADA citations. I I I I understand where we're going and I've played in that gym before, the nineteen fifty-eight version. Um and I know it's been there a long time, but that doesn't, to me, tell me that it's automatically ineffective.
I think when we were doing our, um just a little backstory too, when we were doing our bond planning and we had our community feedback, uh there there was feedback that that the community wanted to address um because of the inequities across town, because West having four um gyms. I know we tried to keep each side, you know, as um similar as we can, so I know that that was brought up. Um and the the elevator, I think it, does it go on all three levels? I thought it only went down, yeah.
It's only two levels.
Right.
Well, it it starts at the intermediate level and it goes up to the balcony level or down to the game level. So it has three stops, but it addresses.
Oh, okay, okay, so it does have to go the three stops, okay.
And and this was um when we did our facility study with our team of architects and construction management firm, um a lot of items within the gym were very um, almost all of them are rated as priority one and two. We can't get parts for the heating system any lot, there are things that are starting to fail that we can no longer fix and that was one of the big issues as it relates to general maintenance of this facility. We need to put a lot of work into it and bring it up to where we need to be so we can actually fix things and make sure that we're operating it efficiently or we need to decide to do something different.
The corridors and the restrooms were like safety hazards because there's.
They're all below grade, you know, they are all kind of cornered, not very wide, you know, to be able to get in. So I mean, from a design standpoint, I mean, you know, can it be renovated? Yes, you know, but.
Can I just jump in and make a few comments, I've worked in there for eight years. And I know Mr. Berger and Mr. Thorenton are here as essential folks, but first of all, like we have students in wheelchairs who attend Central High School and when we have a school assembly, we it's really hard for us to get those kids into the gym. It's like near impossible, you guys probably know that. We also have students who are in crutches, who are on wheelchairs and if they come off the student parking lot, the first thing they have to do is go upstairs to go across the hallway to go downstairs. So for any of those students, we have to arrange a special entry point for them which then sort of defeats the whole purpose of having a secure, but then it's snowy and it's wet. Every year, we have kids who slip and we've had pre- some pretty severe accidents because they slip and crack kneecap kneecaps and things like that. The ADA compliance as far as when we're moving a thousand plus kids into the building and out of the building is it's just really difficult um in those spaces when you think about that up and down.
Plus the supervision concerns, I know we've heard about the supervision concerns about uh particularly during the day, trying to operate all kinds of different classrooms and where the lockers are located related to the gym and how many staff can actually supervise all the different locker rooms and all the spaces students are going. Um so I know supervision became quite clear, a concern and a priority for the staff.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm late to the party and I apologize if you guys already hear this sound.
Sure, well, you just started, so.
Um my, I guess my question is like, we talked about the two phases and it's gonna add costs, how much roughly?
So, we currently have a very high level estimate of thirty-five total. Again, depending on what we decide to do, that can go down or up. Um we do have, I think in here, um some assumptions, again, they're just high-level assumptions to show you how can we can do it for twenty, that was the first goal, is to figure out how we can actually get the majority of the work done in twenty and then what we think it would take. Obviously, um there's a desire to get brand-new courts and to 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 get rid of the ADA concerns, which would be demo of the nineteen sixty-eight auxiliary gym and that raises the cost.
Like, just, I just did, if if there was an ideal solution to have a new one, which there isn't right now, but if there was an ideal solution to have a new one and then do the demo after, would it be a very significantly large difference?
Um that's what we've had, that's our cost estimates right there. So we're assuming if you decide to build a new competition gym um and not renovate, then we are assuming it goes in a different place than anything existing. That would have to be completed and we'd have to make the proper connections to the rest of the building before you could demo the existing nineteen fifty-eight. So everything has a completely different sequence and the impacts of that. And then if you decide to demo it, you can decide to put one or two courts in its place and wrap around all those services for corridors, locker rooms, restrooms. Um and you can decide to leave the aux gym or demo it to get rid of all the ADA concerns.
So I, if I heard you correctly at the very beginning, um talking about the twenty twenty-eight bond and the the mills and that we could go in twenty twenty-eight, you know, because of our mill rate, um are you saying that out of, what did you say, thirty or thirty-five million, thirty-five?
Thirty-five total.
Okay, that potentially we could roll some of those costs into.
Yeah, the way it's assumed right now, again, it can be changed, the way it's assumed right now is the twenty million would come out of this bond and we would reserve and talk to the community about another fifteen for that project for the remaining things.
Which could include tearing down the auxiliary.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Again, these are high-level estimates, obviously they can change given the scope of what's going on over the next couple of years.
I have another question and it probably, it may just totally be out of the ozone. And that is the field houses, which right now are not part of this discussion, I understand that. But if you were able to find support to build the field houses, would that take some of the crunch of trying to do so many phases? Can the field houses work as your gyms to a certain degree and make it easier for you to do some of your construction?
I would ask John.
I mean, yes and no, I mean, it de- you know, with the purpose, I mean, you know, the it depends on where location kids are going outside the building, coming back. You know, I think, I think that you're you're permanent not knowing kind of where that's going to land, you know, if there's a fundraising element that pulls that off or whatever. Um you know, it it's not a wood floor, you know, for basketball, volleyball, you know, so many of those things that take place from that standpoint. So I'd say, you know, where it will take some pressure off of is all of your winter, your spring sports that are trying to be in there in the wintertime, you know, that are trying to be there for baseball, for softball, track. You know, all those that, you know, they're using the gym up till eleven o'clock at night. You know, I think that, you know, that it would take some some pressure off, especially with only for a certain amount of time, you're still even under the phase one, only gonna have three courts. You know, cause you're taking and renovating the small gym um to wrestling. You know, that's a really important aspect that, you know, again, that square footage is pretty sure larger than what West has right now. Um so will it take some pressure off in that way, cause some PE classes and stuff like that? You know, yes, but you know, you're, we're already at three courts now and really four with the small gym. It probably does make it tighter making the small gym area for wrestling, which we've done a lot of already, so we're even tighter now. So it will actually alleviate some of that pressure that we have kids there till ten, eleven at night and every weekend. But but from a day-to-day standpoint, you know, upfront, I wouldn't say it replaces wood courts.
Make sure it.
Yeah, interesting.
You guys have anything you wanna add, come on up.
Maybe not basketball, but we do have the Montessori full court and we do, you know.
Could, I mean, there's lots of things you can do from that standpoint, but um you know, I think that you know, you 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 have to, you still have to solve for, you know, the hardest part of this equation is and we face this with our grass fields, if kids not PE class every day, you know, and and where do the kids play? But we don't have enough capacity at West High School and the Montessori gym for all of what of central athletics. I mean, that's the real hard part of this. You know, but you know, could some of that, you know, if that were to come to fruition, help? Yes. Um you know, and and I think it helps you with, you know, you could, if, let's say that were to come to fruition, you know, you can, you can make some decisions later on the road, down the road of phase two, of what that looks like in the next month or not. Uh but I don't know, it changes the approach you have to take in in phase one.
Yeah.
You know, that's the, that's the hard part, I mean, having lived, all of our teams have to try and borrow other schools, all that for just spring sport space, as much as gyms are used for robot- Just spring sport space, as much as gyms are used for robotics competitions even. So many different things those gym, that gym at Central is used for, um, you know, I just, um, think it'd be hard.
Well, with the new, uh, robotics center, uh, uh, innovation manufacturing. That takes that out of the gym.
Well, it's a great working space, but not for our competition for, you know, the robotics tournament. It's nowhere near the size to be able to host that, you know, thirty teams, you know, all that has to be in a competition gym. Area, yeah.
I suppose it's pretty tight, must be pretty tight there, right?
It is, it's tight already, in fact, we use the, the, um, sixty-eight auxiliary gym as the pits. For that, and then use the main gym for the competition part.
Can, can we keep going, can we go to music and central grade? I'm just curious about the big, the whole picture as we talk about the hundred eighty million.
I think they're asking for our direction.
I think I'm not ready to, to provide input on really not knowing the scope of the whole. I asked about during finance committee and I heard some numbers rattled, but I've never seen a breakdown of the hundred eighty million. So I just see like music's getting fifteen million, central grades fifty-five million. I'd like to think of it as a whole, uh, personally, before I, cause we're not voting on anything tonight, are we?
Uh, it depends on what information you need to give us some direction. We can't start designing until we have a couple of high level things worked out, and that's your pace.
Yeah, cause I'd like to learn about all of the, uh, little, look at the projects as a whole personally.
You do that, and then come back around.
Sure.
Cause I, I do think, yeah, music is, is gonna be an important one too.
And that's like a third of, of this, uh, you know, you know, so, anyway, so I'm just curi-, you know, cause West Middle's getting two million. I'm just curious about the breakdown, cause I've yet to see it about how those dollars, you know, from staff need. To, like, this seems like thirty-five millions that meets all of the need that staff is and the user group has said, so I'd just like to see the other.
I think there's a few more questions on this, let's get that, then we'll head to the next one and then next and come back, if that works.
I just, um, question, just from our, um, like polling of our staff and our community, have, like, from. Um, like Justin sitting right here and I, I know Mr. Burger's in the back there, just curious, you know, I mean, what their input has been. Anything you can share there?
Yeah, if you guys wanna come up, but I know, um, Dr. Van Wagner has had some conversations with some leaders in our area. That have run some pretty significant programming at Central High School. Um, I, I think there's a desire to save the gym, I think there's also an acknowledgement, the work that we would have to do. It might not actually still look like the old gym, um, once we renovate it, given if we're solving those ADA issues. So I, I think it's, it's a crux of trying to figure out what's best for our students and how do we afford it. But I'll let them talk about what they're hearing within the community.
Um, from a PE, so I don't receive, uh, PE as well, in addition to the athletic director, so, um. First of all, PE is our most popular last school. Probably six hours, maybe about zero hours as well, so that space is educational space up to that point. And it's also, it is a major congestion issue, so, for example, I've got a text right now in my pocket from my JV soccer coach. Because we're under winter weather, but we're looking for a place indoors tomorrow, we're in the middle of the spring season, are we going to have winter sports in the mix? Uh, and I think the perfect way to highlight that congestion issue was the first wing, uh, first week of spring sports. Which is our largest spring season, so I've got a report that this two months, right now, is spring. We're hosting, I mean, just a girl basketball regionals, the first week of spring sports, so, um, girl basketball practice, health games. And then Thursday and Friday of that week, um, robots was in the building, it was our year to host a lot. So, just a really major congestion issue with the spaces that we do have, capable to have them, of course. But, uh, I think the crux of the issue is the, um, the participants we have. From a PE standpoint, and also especially from an athletic standpoint. Um, and the other thing I, I would like to add, in the same way that performing arts and robotics is a form of education, it's just an extra period. Education of all support, you know, when they're learning an algebra and biology, it's also an education that. We hope this transforms it and can, 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 I would ask, thank you, second of all, for us, so I just wanted to make sure I had that.
I, um, I would just echo what Justin said, um, and, and Justin's vantage point and advocate, advocacy has been for. Um, the athletics youth standpoint and the logistics and, um, the need for courts and space. And, you know, I think about the individual kids and how hard it is to get them down for an assembly. But also, like, I'd invite any of you guys to come watch the flow of the day at Central. And, and the main point of entry and going up those stairs and down those stairs and what we ask our students to do. And it's current layout deteriorates our gym too, because they attract salt all over the place. And, um, just the, the logistics of getting in and out from the student parking lot and thirteen hundred kids going there. Is, um, something we'd like to address with that single point of entry, kind of mirroring what you guys have done and prioritize in other buildings too. And so, you know, Justin's advocacy on this group has been for that athletic space. I see functionality for our kids and flow and safety for our kids, in addition to being able to safely bring everyone down to. Um, and assemblies, we're looking to bring school culture up a single.
Justin, do you think it makes more sense to just go ahead and get a new gym? As opposed to revise and hopefully?
It just depends on within the constraints of the budget, if we can make, so, so right now the problem with the gym that we have is although it's lined for two courts. Uh, two auxiliary courts, um, boundaries of those auxiliary courts align is in line with the booters as well, so it's just not a safe space to actually run two.
Yeah, you're right there.
So the answer to your question is, um, is more constraint on the budget, where we can make work with the budget that. Um, that's in place in terms of whether it's new or not, of course, as a travesty central graduate, um, you know, I love the tradition of that gym. Um, but at some point, the tradition, the functionality and what the demands that we have for the modern students. I, I, I'll highlight it this way, so in our, in our initial sort of, um, feedback group, we had some of our really, really old timers. Uh, Coach Lober, Mr. Simon, for example, and Coach Lober made the point that when that gym was built. Although we had four thousand students in the building, it was built before Title IX, so it was built before, um, you know, female athletics was, was offered at the high school level. So, uh, to his point, it's just not as functional now than it was when it was built in, in nineteen fifty-eight. So, long-winded way to say, it just depends on if we can, um, if we can build a space that's functional for the demands.
And I would echo that just by saying, Beth, we're not really married to one way, which is nice about it, we just kind of want the means to have the functionality for our students. And so, you know, our user group hasn't really been driven by knock it down, it must be a new facility or renovate. And it's just whatever gets us the most cost-effective way to have, to meet like our highest priorities.
And I'm thinking in terms of time as well as money.
And then the other needle you have to thread is that we need a space while it's going on.
Well, having been through the Boardman building discussion and Central Grade discussion, preserving those historical buildings. You know, I'm a Central grad too, and it's pretty basic, I mean, you know, I mean, I know the history is there, um, because it's been there. But, um, you know, it's, it's a gym and, uh, so, um, interesting. And, and i- if for any of the board members that have been there for like honors convocation, I mean, watching the elderly grandparents. Or just anyone with a disability, you ha- I mean, you have to take the stairs at that point, you're either going up or going down. And it's nerve-wracking just to watch the, them come in and struggle. And so, um, yeah, the ADA is, is a, a real serious concern there.
Be a hard fall.
Yeah.
Well, the po- the worst part about it is when you're doing it, you're not just doing it entering, you're doing it with a massive amount of traffic coming and going in all directions. So it's like extra chaotic as well, so it's not like just navigating it, it's navigating a chaotic situation.
And to get to the elevator at that point, you know, I mean, they're gonna just muster their way through it versus, yeah, so. Um, well, I really appreciate and value your opinions and, um, you know, I think, yeah, I mean, good conversation for sure.
So let me ask a, a, a simple question and not get in trouble. Um, the people that wanna retain the existing gym are doing it solely for budgetary reasons? I mean, there's no nostalgia built into this, there's no, I performed there and. I watched Tom Gazalko and Dan Marley play ball there, so we had to keep it, or is it strictly economics?
Are you asking us or the architect?
I'm asking you, cause you're part of the study group.
I think it's natural for any, uh, school that's been around since eighteen fifty-three to have that history and tradition. Uh, and that nostalgic piece, certainly, I just alluded to the nostalgia that I feel when I walk into that gym. Um, but I, I do think this is gonna be driven by, yeah.
Uh, it was, it was pretty astonishing within like a half an hour to have John Sonnen and John Lober talk about. Um, meeting the needs of our kids above that, I think they got over that much quicker than I thought they would. And listening to those voices made me think that the community in large would too.
And I think it's. Okay, we ready to move on to the next one for now, and then we'll come back?
Yeah. Uh, so secondary music projects, this is the same team. Um, so again, um, we took, um, the standpoint that we had a budget was ten million. Um, and we, um, met with the user group meeting, we actually met as a whole with music, all four sites, to make sure that all voices were heard. Um, we, I asked the architect team to come up with options as it relates to. How, is it possible to do in ten million and does it meet the square foot needs of the team? So I'm just gonna go site by site with some of the things, um, and then share the comments of the user groups. So, Central High School, as was stated, um, I have on here kind of a high level project overview, because I also wanna talk about timeline. Um, as it relates to which project goes first, obviously, again, a multi-year project to do all four sites. Um, and some other constraints that are tied to that. So, for Central High School, the conversation really was around the total number of square foot needed. And then just trying to decipher within the space we have, what would the cost be because we need either new, a major renovation or a minor renovation? Now, when we look at Central High School, and here's kind of just an overview of their existing spaces. They're, they're pretty landlocked, but they have space outside of that, um, for an addition if needed. Um, the one thing this doesn't show is the possibility of other spaces within a building. One of the things that Dr. Van Wagner and I talked about and Cabinet was, we do have buildings with excess sp- space in the building. So do we want to entertain additions if we have existing space? So that was something that I pushed the group to look at. Um, for, uh, Central High School specifically, there are needs in choir as it relates to, I would say, between minor and major renovations. But the ultimate goal of the teachers and the staff is to try to get choir closer to Bannon Orchestra, which would require an addition. It's a location, um, preference as it relates to how they all work together, sharing libraries and office space and practice rooms. Um, so that is part of this budget is, uh, one point seven million for an addition to, to make that happen. And then they could use the existing choir room in the future, either as a black box for spaces or an extra classroom, which I think they say they could fill. Um, so again, we're looking at the high level budget of ten million to try to see if we could even make it work for that with the amount of square foot that's needed. Um, again, I don't know what other spaces could be available, we're hesitant to throw those spaces out here until we have conversations with principals and administrators. Um, but there could be potentially other spaces within the building we could make work. Um, we just haven't gotten, again, that far along as it relates to design. So these are the main spaces we've been talking about, there are adjacent spaces, there's also the F wing that's going to be vacated. From the classes that are moving to the new IMC, it's not right next to it. Um, it's on the, um, right of that red line for Bannon Orchestra, that area minus that end classroom. So there is closer space available. I've asked the architects to kind of investigate that as it relates to ceiling heights and what potentially it could be used for. Um, but this high level budget was based on total square foot they felt they needed for classes, for storage. For practice rooms, meeting rooms, um, offices, um, their library, um, storage of, um. Equipment, um, instruments and risers. So that was really what we were looking at when we came up with this overall summary. And this overall summary is construction only at that site. The total, um, that I have at the end of the spreadsheet includes contingency for the whole project, architect engineering and those things, I didn't put it per site. So that's where we came to this number, and the user gr- group felt like we had identified the total square foot they need. Knowing, we don't know exactly what will go where, but felt like we had enough money per square foot assigned to the building.
Can I, will you go back a, 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 a page, um?
To the, um.
Yes, I thought the, where the big red boxes, I thought that entry point was a safety concern. With accessing, getting into the back of the building, um.
The courtyard?
Yes, I thought that was.
Yeah, I don't love it, but you know, I think we, there are some things that you, you can't have a courtyard you can't get out of. You know, I think, again, I think.
It's, that would be if we did the addition in between that space and the building on the right and we closed the courtyard. That would be a safety concern for anybody that was stuck in the courtyard, they have to have egress. If we did the addition somewhere else and we didn't close off the courtyard, that wouldn't be as big of a concern. So we have options, it could go just below that box, it doesn't necessarily have to go to the right.
Okay, I thought it was a discussion about actually wanting to close it off.
It, it there is, I, I do love that idea, but it's not feasible by law that you have the ability, you can't close somebody in. So we really, that, that kind of option is taken away that we just.
You can do it, you just have to have a provision they can get out, which then inherently means you have more doors that are programmed. And, and that's been something we've been trying to work around.
Okay.
I, I have just a general question, and this is more historical for me. Um, there was always the concern about Central's campus and West Middle School being sort of a California campus. That complete open ingress, egress, however you wanted to, from a life safety standpoint. Does this start to address any of those issues in that open campus format?
Well, over the years, we've started to close the campus, so we have corridors everywhere. It doesn't, we haven't gotten rid of all the exterior doors that we'd like to try to get rid of, um, but every project we do, we, we address that. Um, I think if you do an addition here, i- if you do connect it to the right, I think it would solve some transitionary. Um, opportunities for students to not have to go outside to get there or walk all the way around. Uh, but then it poses maybe something else that you might not want, additional exterior doors and more timing and programming.
Yeah, about, um, what was that, three or four years ago, we added a corridor on that F wing. And that's got allowed the building to be fully locked, so now students do not go outside at all during the day. Like, they cannot go outside, they would, they would not be able to get in any of those external doors, they'd have to go all the way around the building again. Because we added that corridor.
It secures the building, but the campus still has those open points of ingress that if there were. Somebody who wanted to get in, they could get in. Okay, I'm just curious whether we start to address that, okay?
We've addressed a lot over the years, I think, and again, with that large of a footprint, unless you start lopping stuff out and building it closer together. Which requires a lot of additions and demolition, we haven't gone that far.
I, just from having, you know, toured, I think I was probably the only board member that went on the music tour, um, to all of our buildings. Um, and tha- that back, I think you called it the F wing right there, that back, was really unused. Um, they, there, there were a lot of classrooms that had been, you know, left. Um, and so personally, I mean, I would like to see them reused versus. You know, I like the idea of reusing what's there instead of adding an addition, um, if that's what made sense, you know, to. Um, to fill the need of, of what they need at Central High School.
Yeah, that, that is kind of the crux where we're stuck, because the cost is completely different for new, four hundred dollars a square foot. Versus, I can't remember what we used for minor or major renovations, but much less than that. Um, given there is space available, that, I'm kind of looking for direction. Because they, they would prefer an addition and have it all be right a part of it, um, so that they can collaborate. And I'm sure there's many other reasons why they want that, um, but we do have empty space nearby. And we do have a choir room that exists that needs m- minor to somewhat, um, more, um.
Sprucy.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty dinky.
So it's, it's the, it's a good size, they like the size and it works for their purposes, but needs some renovations. They just don't like the loca- location, and they've got a lot of instructional reasons why it works better to be all together. Um, not an instructional person, but that, for me, is a struggle to look at the budget and the difference to move something that works.
Yeah.
But again, I'm, I'm speaking behalf on the people that do the work and it makes a big difference for them.
I know, but then you think about, and a- again, I, I totally appreciate their, you know, the feedback. But when you think about our, um, speaker tonight on West Middle School and not building the addition there when that was so eye-opening. I mean, for me personally, I don't think it's changed since I went to school there. And the need for space and where they're storing instruments, um, I completely agree with. If there's money to be put, I think West Middle, um, me, you know what I mean? Like, maybe the compromises remodel, um, might not be ideal location, so it's all close together. And I, I hate to say that, cause I always wanna trust those that are leading instruction there, um. But, uh, West Middle is, is, and I know we're gonna get to that, so, um, in desperate need of some attention. That was the biggest eye-opener of all of the spaces, um, so.
Well, it seems to me too, it was disconnected, your orchestra, your instrumental music was off over this area of the bill, of the school. And then your choral stuff was way over there, as if the two had nothing to do with each other.
I'm in the same boat as Erica, it's just like, it's really hard when we've got so many needs and there's that space, especially one that's been opened up. And I don't know if there's any compromise options with a smaller addition, kind of like what we did with the manufacturing center where we used some square footage, but added to it.
We, we definitely have some adjacent classrooms, like if you're looking at this to the left, that certainly could help with their storage needs. Um, I, I don't think I would recommend putting a classroom there, they're currently classrooms, but because of the noise. But it certainly could help with the overall square foot they need. It doesn't solve the choir issue and the F wing wouldn't solve a, a new choir room due to ceiling heights and, and the overall size of it.
I'd say the F wing that we're talking about, we, we briefly looked at it and, you know, I've learned a lot about the volume of musical spaces. And although not ideal, I mean, I, I think they would even like a taller choir room than they have now, which if we were to build new, we could accomplish. But to move one of those functions to that F wing, I would think most of your instructional staff is gonna say the volume is gonna limit the quality of that space.
It could perhaps be additional space though for practice rooms or, I mean, not necessarily ideal given the spaces and how they relate to each other. But if they did want a black box in the future, which I don't really know much about, other than it's a big rehearsal space that they need, could be potentially in there. Ceiling height wouldn't, wouldn't match one that is typical of a black box, but it could work. So I think there's options there. But again, with all of these, you know, I'm gonna ask for some direction as it relates to using existing spaces and new and, and kind of what direction the board would like to go. So I can move on to another site, 'cause this is one big conversation about music.
Yeah, I think it's important to tie his point to, to understand this, you know, as a whole.
So... So for East Middle School, this one actually, is actually quite similar to Central High School. So the existing choir room is over by the library and not with the orchestra and bran- band rooms. So one of their requests is to relocate that to an existing space within the building. We did discuss the possibility of additions here, however, none of their programs are on outside walls and some of the spaces that they could potentially switch with to be on outside walls do not have the ceiling height that they currently have. So when you look at that building itself, the roof bumps up for band and orchestra where it is now, not some surrounding areas. So the request for this one is to relocate choir to be closer to the rest of the spaces. So we have been kind of looking, for one, in the big red box that does currently include a, a student lounge, which may or may not be available. And then potentially putting choir in additional surrounding classroom, either to the left or to the bottom, to try to get it closer together so they can share the office, the library, storage needs and things of that nature. So again, we've identified the overall square footage as it relates to the needs of renovating existing spaces. We don't have any addition costs in this one. We believe we've captured the total square footage, we haven't identified where it might go if it moves.
And this is to be a more efficient use of the space rather than expanding the space and adding capacity?
They, they need both, they need to expand.
And this accomplish the capacity issue?
Yes.
By how much?
Well, I know that we've asked them to explain the needs by category and we're meeting the needs of total square footage for storage, for office, for practice rooms, for the actual classroom itself. I don't have identified here the total square foot that we're recommending we renovate, 'cause I, I don't wanna single out a classroom that's currently being used and then get somebody upset if that's not the one we choose. So I'm just saying that we have that box, plus we have additional space for a new choir room somewhere within the vicinity if we have the space available to renovate. So West Middle School, so this one identifies minor, major, and new construction. We had a, a small amount for new construction. This one is interesting as it relates to all the building constraints in addition to the total square foot needed. We did, as we did for the other buildings, we didn't identify additional spaces in addition to the box that you see here for use, based on the needs that they identified with total square foot. Again, I haven't highlighted which rooms those are, because we haven't had those conversations about whether those rooms are actually available or not. At the lower end of that box, we do have a student store and an office space. We also have an old staff lounge or staff, old cafeteria for staff across the hall that could be usable space. Again, I'm saying that at a very, very high level and I don't make that decision, but it is up for conversation. You could also do an addition to the right there, we have some limitations there as it relates to how much space we actually have before the sidewalk could be moved, before, before the health center and which grade it would be on. So doing an addition there does cause some complications, but it's not necessarily off the table.
So originally, the conversation was to bump off the back of the orchestra and band rooms towards the health center. So these two empty classrooms, so to speak, would that fulfill their need for space? Because currently, down the hallway where, is where they're storing all their instruments.
And that in addition to more space outside of that, which could be discussed. That, that box itself doesn't solve the issues.
Okay, okay.
Again, we were, we were trying to look at, yeah, I'm gonna throw stuff out there, because it's part of the building, but no decisions have been made. I'm always very cautious about this. But again, the cafeteria across the way, they have that side cafeteria that used to be specifically for staff. I'm not really sure how they use it, that would be a conversation with the principal and the staff on how they use it. Could that become available? I don't know. We also have, on the, the, the upper side of the little theater, there are some classes. Right now, I think it's waits and there's a health room. It's at a different grade, but we could connect to that, possibly use those spaces. Again, I don't know if that works within the building plan, but it could be explored.
Yeah, I bet that teacher cafeteria is the old home ec rooms back in the day. I'm, I'm guessing that they probably turned into a teacher...
I don't, I don't think so, 'cause they have a different home ec room that we turned into STEM. But I think that actually was a staff cafeteria.
Okay.
Not sure how they use it now, and again, I don't know if it's available. These are all just things that we were exploring to try to stay away from additions if we could, but provide the total number of space they need.
Yeah, I mean, I, if you're, I mean, I'm, I know you're looking for some feedback, so... I'm trying to like, but I, I would just really stress, West Middle was, and I mean, it was, it was a pretty rough... I mean, instruments in the hall and desks on the little theater stage, the teachers have no place to put anything, there's no practice rooms. There were so many things that they needed at West Middle that, that they didn't have, even compared to East Middle. So I, in my opinion, just crucial to give them the space that they needed, 'cause that program really is growing and so many students benefit from the music program at West Middle. I mean, East Middle too, so, yeah.
Are you able to talk about some of the constraints within addition to the right there and what our limitations are?
Looking for them, I gotta remember which one we're at. This is one, you've got the additional building over there, right?
Yeah, the health...
The health centers.
Yep, so you've got a health center that, that's not substantially far away from a code perspective. I can only build so close to another building before I start getting into some, some limitations from a code perspective, which starts to drive some construction costs. I think you do have some grade issues, I know, you know, a majority of this space is already on a lower level. You have to go down a ramp to get in, into this. The little theater, each one of those kind of serpentine lines is a step. And you enter, from the left, you enter at a grade up there. You go down that ramp and you enter the other side at a lower grade and then it continues down even farther. So to do renovations and use that as usable space, I mean, one of the things we talked about in just brainstorming is how we could use that theater. Only, only two-thirds of it to three-quarters, somewhere in there, could all be on the same level and maintain anywhere close to the volume that we need in that space. So there's challenges there and I believe that grade starts to come back up a little bit. So we would have that same grade issue. The connectivity would wanna be through what you see between orchestra and band. If you see the little, little room with all the little lines on it, that's a stair that goes up to a mezzanine. Not that you can't walk under the mezzanine, but we'd have to take all of those programmatic spaces that they use there and replace those elsewhere. The other challenge we have on most of your buildings is that, most of your buildings are larger than they're supposed to be now by codes. Codes get more restrictive every year that they do an upgrade, right? So anytime I start to add additions, I have to put a very expensive form of construction between the two buildings that designate the addition as a standalone building. Again, not impossible to solve, we do it all the time, but again, it, you know, does it drive cost? A handful of percentage to build this separation between buildings. So, you know, knowing we had 10 million for all four of them and we're trying to, trying to measure... Each school had two pages of wish lists. And, you know, we had to try to sift through that and say, okay, what are the priorities we can hit? And get, you know, the top two or three boxes checked or, or approached within the dollars that we have.
And we didn't even get to the dollars that we have, we're over to start with, so that's why we're having this conversation.
New construction being more expensive than, than renovated construction, 'cause, you know, I don't have the benefit of existing walls and mechanical systems and electrical service. So it, it just, this whole project is, is really constrained by budgets.
If we wanted to do a 2,000 square foot addition to the right of band or orchestra, could we?
We squeezed it in there, I mean, it, it's tight, but we did squeeze it in there when we looked at it.
And, and I think one of the bigger challenges with that addition has to do with the grade outside the building. And right now, there are two exit doors out of band and orchestra, what's labeled as band and orchestra. We'd have to maintain those egress points and exiting for those classrooms. So as you move further and further south or east, the grade starts to drop off and then providing exiting from that addition becomes more and more challenging because of where the grade is on the outside of the building. It can be done, it probably means moving a lot of earth and maybe some ramps on the outside of the building, which isn't ideal in our climate, but it, it can be done.
And Mark, we don't dare stack any of this, go to a second story?
Yeah, I'm gonna let Tracy jump, jump, jump in there. Can we do it? Sure, but I think, and maybe Jack too, for that matter. The disruption to the existing building to put a second floor on top of it is substantial. And then there's access elevators, that whole equation starts to become part of the conversation.
I remember going in the orchestra room full of students and there were, I mean, Mrs. Pilbinan's class, I think she said she had 60 or 80 cellists and physically, or something, and don't quote me on that, but I mean, literally physically, they, they couldn't even hold class in the orchestra room with, with the students that were taking cello. So I think, I, I guess th- those are just my concerns of what the music program said, you know, or their needs and... But again, I think exploring maybe some of those other spaces, if they could expand in that way and would it fulfill their needs, I think is, is definitely something. Yeah.
I do think that's the one challenge where we start to talk about, it's easy to look at a two-dimensional floor plan and say this room is empty, but the, the staff hits me on volume every time. If those ceilings aren't tall enough, it doesn't work. So on two-dimensional paper, it looks like a perfect plan and sometimes reality, that doesn't pan out. I think that's some of the challenge with trying to build over top. I mean, these footings and foundations weren't initially designed for a second story, so that's extra weight. You know, these are tall spaces, so now you say, I'm gonna go up 10, 12 feet and put another floor on while I'm going up 25 feet to put another floor on. So those buildings get even taller, circulation gets more expensive, it's just cost-driven.
So lastly, we took a look at West Union High. And this one had a more heavy addition budget because of where the spaces are currently located and then what the user group was focused on adding. Clearly, if we're going to add to the scene shop for, for some instructional practices that happen during the day, it has to be added to the existing scene, scene shop, or you wouldn't be able to move equipment within it. So if you're gonna expand that, it would have to be an addition, you can't really have it somewhere else. As far as some of their practice rooms that they're looking for and a formal black box, could it be maybe moved within the building? I'm not really sure if they have space available, that's the one site I'm not sure about. But as it relates to where everything is located, music very clearly is in one wing of the building. But I haven't had the conversations with the principal about potential other spaces. So this just highlights where their spaces are. So again, they wanted an expansion of the scene shop for storage specifically, but they also apparently hold some classes there during the day. Again, Jessie has been part of our group, because I'm not the one to decide if it's instructional or performance. This, this money was set aside for instructional improvements to, to classrooms and it's hard for me to determine if they're asking for something that's really instructional or not, and that's where she helps guide me. And then when we move forward and we get into design, obviously, each principal will be involved in that user group meeting when we start design. So this is the overall budget for what we've shown, so I'm just over 14 million. My request today was going to be approval to move forward that, with that as a minimum and some high-level expectations around, is it the desire of the board to try to reuse existing space if it's available? Or do we wanna entertain additions where the staff feel it's more appropriate? 'Cause it does sway the cost estimates quite a bit.
Okay. Um, because I don't know where the discussion's gonna go right now, I'm just gonna take the opportunity to get the students out. So if you need a form signed, come on up, you can see any board member.
You're always welcome to stay too, guys.
Yeah.
Good, good conversation about learning. Learning space, that's...
For music is to start at the fourteen five as the budget and then identify the priority of which school goes first, I'm hearing like it might be West Middle School. So then, we would start actual design with the user group meeting, the principal and whoever needs to be included in that. And we could come back if we're not able to meet the constraints of the existing budget. And we could share at that time what we have learned about, are there other existing interior spaces that could work for them or are we to a point where we have to do an addition?
And I think too, just, uh, you know, Wendy, um, just in, you know, having her a part of all the conversations, looking at the music program and. You know, Mr. D and all the, all the pieces and parts to be able to weigh it out, if we get to a point of, you know, this is. Where our budget is and is there a place we can cut and add depending on need, I think is really important too, so. Um, but yeah, I totally support, um, that being on the low end of of what the music department needs, I mean.
Yeah, and I, I'm, same way, I do support raising the budget to that and. I think one of the things we struggle with here, which is obviously the history of building things piecemeal and grades and. Different, that obviously if we, which is impossible to do. Obviously not starting again, cause that's a very expensive proposition, but I also wanna be careful that we're not band-aiding, like. Even though it's a massive upgrade, that we're just band-aiding something that. Yeah, and I know that this isn't gonna go over well either, but if we needed to do this in. Two phases on one bond now and one bond later, but we have much better facilities, uh, cause I don't wanna be here in. Well, I won't be, really, I really hope I won't be here in, uh, eight years' time. Talking about this decision and being like, if only we had done this at the same time, we could have avoided this, um, so.
And that that is a concern of the staff, making sure that they get what they need and that the budget doesn't control and then. Control it from the fact that, okay, now we have something better, but it really doesn't work for us.
Or it doesn't solve our problem.
Right.
Yeah, problem.
The challenge is when you have four sites under one budget inherently, you're gonna start with one and you could potentially increase the budget there and then. It, you know, what's the board's, I guess, comfort with identifying each one individually and working through them and then. Seeing where the budget goes, that's just, it's up for discussion. You know, if we're gonna try to make all four within fourteen five and we start with one and we find extra needs, are we supposed to take it from another site? Or do we come back to the table and have another conversation about total budget? And all of these projects are going to be in different years that could have inflation or tariffs tied to it, so there's just so many unknowns. But my fear is we won't start, and I'd like to get started with one site. But have some overall direction from the board on where I'm supposed to go and when I'm supposed to come back for presentation purposes.
I think that's part of the staff too, like what's the.
Mm-hmm.
What, like what are the, and I always say everything's a critical need and that's the problem, but again, I don't wanna. Put a bunch of money into something that we then have to undo again in eight years' time. Because we didn't add the, didn't add the expansion, cause.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if it, if it's the best thing to do and we all know is the best thing to do to add the expansion is that, then we should add the expansion, like. Again, I know, I also gonna, you're gonna bring me a budget, I'm not gonna be able to approve it, so I get that, but, um, I think we should take a longer term view as well. And you guys have to gauge that tolerance of, you know, are you okay with this for four or five years? Yeah, you're not gonna get the benefit out of this, but then the the grand vision at the end, and I don't know where that balance is, so.
Do we want to stay with the thought of we've got central grade here and then come all the way back?
I think.
It's a separate architect, we could swap out.
I feel like the two, that's such a dramatically different, the two, I don't know, Ty was the one who had the thing, but I'd like to do the two.
Yeah, I'm, I'm. I'm good with the two, yeah, I agree, the two and then move on to central grade, I think so, that makes more sense.
My, my point with the two is, we do feel if the board is willing to have a conversation about a phase two in the next bond, which could be as early as twenty twenty eight. We are doing a lot more work upfront due to, first, everybody wants everything done right away, we're doing a lot right now with train. Thirty-three million dollars is is a pretty hefty lift as it relates to our priority one, two and three. We're gonna have a lot of progress really upfront as it relates to the hundred and eighty million. And with central grade, um, hoping to occupy twenty-nine thirty, it's all coming to the the realization that. As we do all this work and stagger everything, because for one, we can't do everything all at once anyway, there's only so much capacity that we have with our staff. There's only so much capacity we have with the trades, the local trades and the architects, these are the same architects doing central high renovations and music, so we. We don't want to pit them against each other as far as timing goes, but we need to make sure that we're paying attention to that. Inherently, we're going to be into a new bond authorization at some point. I'd like the board as part of strategic planning to have a conversation about what that could look like. And maybe during these projects, what naturally would fit into that, given the fact that we can't do it any sooner anyway.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, yeah, to my point as as well, it's like, I don't wanna just band-aid it for what really will probably be a couple, you know, two, three. Years, which is a lot when you're, if you're a student who may miss out on the whole thing. So that's about that I do get when we open the facility and so many people are just wrapping up their high school and it's then then that. But hopefully, again, that will be a long-term benefit, so I do support this raise and, uh.
Well, I think if you're doing the gym over at Central, then you'd have to start the music programs over on the west side of the town. Just so that both ends of the city feel like they're being.
Yeah, unless there was a a major cost, uh, which I don't think there is in this case, but like, that's the other thing too, it's like this. Everything they're going to.
And Erica's point about, you know, West Middle may be more pressing. Um, I think that's important, I, I'm tempted to look at the senior highs first because. Then the middle school kids will get definitely a benefit of that. You know, so depending on how your construction.
There has been a concern brought from teachers that students could be in construction mode for years. If they're currently at West Middle School and you do that first and then you do West Senior High, but I think to Erica's point, looking at the condition of the. Facility should really guide us more as to where we start, as long as there's not major constraints, um. The fact of the matter is, all of these projects are going to, um, interrupt what's going on in in the day-to-day operations and it's our job to try to alleviate. Alleviate that as best as possible.
And I just look at the age of, you know, East Middle School is a newer building, um, and again, a West Middle School, it has not changed. I mean, it 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 looks, I mean, and when you, the the principal, you know, they use that theater space for their parent meetings and their. You know, welcome to sixth grade, um, I, I just think West Middle should should really be a priority, of course, I would always lean on our. Um, our teachers and staff as to what they think looking at before, but uh, my gut is is that. Um, West Middle being one of the oldest buildings, um, you know, similar to Central High School, that's just.
So, to tie in to Christine's point, I guess one thing is, I think we are okay to break the budget into four. I think that would actually be easier on us, um, and everyone else, because it's not like competing, it's like, well, you got. Yeah, we need an extra ten foot over here, so we're gonna have to take it from somewhere, so which one, which one of you three?
To Ty's point, we have other projects identified in the existing bond, which. Again, my point about talking about the next bond is simply because we'll need to go out by twenty thirty to maintain three point one mils or it'll drop below that. And we'll be in a conversation around an increase and for the fact that we have jump-started work, I. I can't even tell you how overwhelming it is right now with the construction that we're already doing and what we're currently designing. It's a lot and we're doing that on purpose to try to front load, so the community can see the work that we are doing and that we're moving forward. But we also know there's going to be increased costs, so the more we could do now, um, the better for the budget.
So, I, do you have enough on music?
I feel good about music unless, um, anybody in the audience has a major concern.
I have the.
Well, I mean, so what we're talking about adding square feet to West Middle, but there's no West Middle addition. And we're okay with the number?
We're potentially talking about it, my, what I just understood was I'm still to look at reusing existing spaces, but if they don't work. Identified by the staff that has to use it, I'm to look at additions and bring that back to the group so they know what the budget is.
Yeah, as long as it's coming back, that's perfect.
I I'm not real comfortable with any of this remodeling, it doesn't account for additional capacity. For life safety or additional capacity, cause for going out for a bond, it, that's the easiest thing to explain to taxpayers. Why we did something.
The only caveat I'll have to that is if we have empty space that's not being used, do, it doesn't behoove us to look at that space if it could be renovated.
That expands capacity, that's what I'm looking for, okay.
So for instance, when we did the Innovation Manufacturing Center, so remember, they were set at a complete new construction. We made the decision to look at three classrooms in each school because we had empty rooms about three or four. Again, we have smaller populations than we did even, you know, five, ten years ago. We utilized that, we gave us about an extra twenty-five hundred square foot, I wanna say, in the Innovation Manufacturing Center. Somewhere two thousand to twenty-five at each of those, by renovating some space, adding on, but we gave the architects some flexibility to take a look at that. You might remember my, and again, not an architect and I proved it, you know, thought the backside of of West High School by the office. Was the place to put the IMC, but you know, we had a computer lab there, but the architects and. Gabe and his team, they took a look at all that and said, you know, the front makes a lot more sense, and they were right, and that's why we hired them. And so, so I think giving them a crack at taking a look at that with staff and seeing what that could be with existing space to see. And if it doesn't, you know, then then we'll know that and we'll know that there's a different route to go.
I I'd like to see options, I guess, right, and I I was kinda, I thought this was more of an informational under the superintendent report, I didn't realize we were taking action. Voting on things, so I mean, I I.
You're not voting, we're just giving direct, I think.
Well, I guess my direction then is just more options, like like multiple option A, B, C for various things. Um, based on staff need, I guess, is all in.
And I think once, once I have the, my concern was coming at it with just ten million. Um, I needed to feel if the, I needed to know if the board was okay with us going over that, given some of the constraints, so.
I guess I don't know if it's okay or not, because I guess I haven't really looked at the hundred and eighty million, like we're about to approve tonight, the facility's storage. The re- renovation at West Senior High, five million dollars for Saban, the parking lot, the lockers, laptops, all under, and I haven't yet to see a list. Of all of the projects under the hundred and eighty million, so I guess, I I mean, maybe this can come back to finance. Um, I I I welcome Central Grade's conversation, I don't know if there's any music staff here, like we had our PE staff. But I I guess I'm not comfortable even providing guidance without enough information.
I think guidance has already, that, I think we've already given enough guidance is what, or at least on this area.
Well, I, that's up to, if you wanna vote or not, I I'm looking for comfort level with fourteen point five as the minimum. And a start with West Middle School, we will explore all options to try to, um, use as much interior space as possible, if we can't. And there's an addition involved, we would be back in front of the board to approve that, that's what I'm looking for, if you wanna do.
I don't think you need, I don't think we need a vote to do it, I think, and I think Ty's okay with that too, cause it's coming back to the board, yes.
Options with the, with the, yeah, that's fine.
It's kind of, uh, cause you also have to remember, we don't, we don't wanna do this. I've, I've bought a couple of these sites and it's funny, cause like you you have great ideas and you come in and then you look at something and it's terrible and then it's like, the cost is out there and then it was. I mean, I'm dreaming about this after, I don't know how you even do it, um, and I only looked at like one project, um, so. I think just the guidance to bring this to, cause then you don't wanna do fifty different designs, cause you're paying for it every time too, so.
If if there was a hard stop at ten million, I have a completely different direction, so I I feel like I'm in a good spot. Um, with where we're at and I feel like we can move forward with design and really start to get some specific information for you.
Going back, I feel like we're gonna have, uh, some, it's gonna be harder to reach a consensus of where we are, but, um, on the central gym. Not that there's disagreement between us, but it's a, it's a lot harder to vision the options, I guess, so. To to that point, we've gotta go back to the gym, no, that central gym renovations.
I think with the, the, so here's what I'm looking for for direction on the gym, is the board comfortable with demolition? Because that completely sways the direction we go in, um, I feel comfortable that we can make it work within twenty million. Which was assigned as part of the overall bond, um, there will come to a point, and we've talked about this with staff, that. There are some priorities we know we have to hit with the twenty million, and then if that's where we stop because there's no new bond money. We're prepared so that if there ever is new bond money of where the higher next priorities would go, where we would put them, we certainly don't wanna build something now. That won't give us the flexibility in the future to add something they really want in a space that now doesn't have to be renovated, cause we just renovated it. So I feel confident we can make it work with this bond money, um, not all of their priorities, I think there inherently would be a second phase. Um, I guess I'm looking for direction on is the board open to a second phase so that. They can better determine their priorities right now and what they would need in the future, obviously, it it's up to the community to vote on that. Um, they would make their decisions based on that, but we would have a flexible plan that we can enact if a new board was, bond was passed and we had more money. We would know what those next steps would be, the demolition is cruc- crucial, if the board's not comfortable with demolition, we have a com-. We know where we have to go and it changes all of those numbers and the timing.
When you say demolition, you're talking about partial and or complete, dem- demolition, the whole thing.
Yes.
Sixty-eight, fifty-eight.
Probably this one, maybe.
Fifty-eight and the s- and sixty-eight.
Um, potentially fifty-eight and sixty-eight, I think we can decide on the sixty-eight later, I I think it'll stand as it is for quite some time until we get to the phase where we need to decide that. Um, so I I'm I'm comfortable if I only get a decision on the fifty-eight right now. Um, because that really i- it's landlocked, they need to use it while we're doing construction and it will determine where we place something else. Um, for the first couple of steps.
Well, I appreciate the phase proposal, I guess you could say, um, I think that that makes sense, so I thank you for doing that, um. And I I am comfortable with the demolition, uh, although I will preface that I don't, um, like. We just haven't gotten feedback from the community to know if like that, if it was that option.
And we have some, so let me give you what we have and let you decide on if you want more, you know.
Like, I really appreciate.
So Justin, you know, Justin would tell you, Justin left me, so. But we sat down with a group of, um, our current coaches, um, so we had, uh. Emily, the volleyball coach, we had, um, Luke, our boys' basketball coach, we had girls' basketball. Um, we had girls' volleyball, um, of our existing current staff. Then we also had John Lober, who, longtime forty, fifty-year coach at Central High School, John Sonneman. Um, we also had, uh, former basketball coach.
Constance.
John Constance was there, and so we we kinda tried to bring in, you know, the, the, the history of, you know, people that had. Been coaches in that building, we brought our current staff in and we had the conversation about all of it. And I think that they were torn, um, you know, I think, but in the very end, they said. You know, what's best for our kids beats nostalgia. Now, the question is, is, you know, are you gonna get a more solid group and, you know, and and I lean on Jesse, you have central people. To ask that question of, that's the crop of people that are diehard, invested in athletics, John Sonneman was the athletic, athletic director for many, many years. You know, Justin, Ben, you know, again, both central graduates, Jesse is a central graduate, like, you know, so, so a lot here. So I think there's that element, so my thought is from that, those folks, there's that that thought of consensus, they'll miss it. And they'll tell you it's a great place to see a game, you know, but there's that element. However, that being said, if the board wanted one more, I'd be willing to put something together. But you guys gotta decide if you feel like you need that kinda consensus more than that group that I just mentioned.
So to be clear, so all those people you just listed are pro tearing the big gym down?
They were, like, yeah, I, you know, and I would say, I would say they're fifty-one, forty-nine tie, you know, of of tearing it down, you know, but. Like, in the statement that was made, like by John Sonneman, you know, John Lober, you know, was talked about, the statement he made about, you know, that element. They're torn, but they said in the end, the best thing is for what's the most use of facility for our kids.
So this was split, the user group was split essentially.
I wouldn't say that, no.
So you said fifty-one, forty-nine?
They all were fifty-one, forty-nine, like, you know, if you had to give them a percentage of confidence of tearing it down.
They all voted.
There was a consensus across the room.
Well, I think we should have started with that.
Yeah.
So.
But again, that's, that's a small group, you know, I don't wanna pretend that's everybody that would maybe give feedback across the, you know, the Traverse City community. So that's why I just wanna give you still that option if you want it, but I just wanted to let you know the group that we had that conversation with and. I think Justin and what he said reflects exactly the conversation of that group.
But and Justin was kinda wishy-washy on whether, so. But and Justin was kinda wishy-washy on whether, so I just wanna be clear, like.
And and I'll be honest, they were a bit wishy-washy, but in the end.
Rather have like a letter of, like, something in the packet saying, all signed by these, these community members, like, just, you know, some, I mean, it's hard to come in here. And make a dis- you know, we're about to approve a hundred and five million dollars tonight.
Yep.
On these three projects, so, and and we get thrown in with, like, we have to make massive decisions tonight whether to tear down the gym.
Well, we're not.
Don't.
No.
That's the direction I need for however long you need to make it.
Path she's going to go down first.
Yeah.
I see.
We we backed down, we backed down many a path before as well, this is just the which path.
So we can get some more feedback from community, just to be clear, I'd like to be clear before we say, yeah, let's tear it down.
Well, right now, I think she said I wanna head down there with architectural design, that, like I said, but I'm also willing to put in the next, you know, thirty days together. A couple of focus groups to make sure that, you know, that is more of the consensus.
The group we had is fine, I just wanna be really clear before I say, yeah, go ahead and start going down this path, cause the path takes money.
Sure.
Christine's time.
Sure.
Um, and that takes away focus from other things like learning, right, um, so.
We're not going down a path also takes time, so, uh, but to your point, I think we, what you want is the public then see this, this is why we do. Try and do things in multiple meetings and committees, is the public can speak out, they can see, it's not like we just voted and the money's gone.
Yeah, there's no vote of spending, that's why we're not taking a vote.
Okay, well, I mean.
I have no authority right now to go spend a hundred and five million.
I guess I'd like to see both paths, then, like, I'd rather see more options than less options, so, and I know that's probably not helpful, right?
It's it, it's costly.
It is helpful, because I'm, I'm feeling like we have the option to entertain demo, and now we know what we can put together to show you the options. So if we do demo, these are all the possibilities, it, this is gonna be in the paper tomorrow, we're going to hear from community members. So, you know, if I can start working on the fact that demo is a possibility, and I will bring it back to you when we feel like we have a good design. You'll be able to hear from the community between now and then, or if you want to do small groups, we certainly could do that, I feel like I have what I need. I feel like the board is open to demo, if it makes sense.
And at some point, we're gonna have to make our decision, and somebody's not gonna like it.
Well, and I value, yeah, and I really value you guys being here, so we could learn about the reinforced concrete to hold it up. And and what is going to have to take place with the current existing, um, you know, I think that that is all really important. And I really value those people that you mentioned that were.
Every one of them would be happy to come if you want me to invite them, you know.
No, I mean, I don't, I don't think that, I'm just thank you for sharing.
Consensus of the board, you know.
No, I'm just thank you for sharing, and, um, yeah, I I feel comfortable with with.
I'm gonna also ask a question of the experts over here, pres- you know, project managers, architects, whatever. Uh, the operation and maintenance of a lot of these facilities never gets brought into the equation. What's it gonna cost to maintain these over the years? I would assume if we construct a new facility there, we will get state-of-the-art whatever, whether it be mechanicals, electrical. And operating and maintaining those facilities would be less expensive, certainly more manpowerless expensive. Than trying to maintain, again, something we have poured millions of dollars into to renovate. Is that a safe assumption?
Let me start, because i- in my opinion, it's, um, the energy efficiency would be the same, we wouldn't renovate the existing. And leave it with old systems that aren't energy efficient, they would get the same as the new, um, it depends on your total square foot. We are recommending an increase in square foot, it will increase our overall utilities, it will be much more efficient than we have now. But it would be more efficient if we renovated the existing competition gym too, cause we wouldn't leave it without dated systems.
Well, it's, it's not just systems, it's elevators, it's the roof, it's, um, wha- whatever windows you may have in there that are now dated. It's, the idea of trying to renovate everything leads you to sort of, why didn't we just build a new one to begin with?
And that's why we looked at the cost estimate, the elevator's a big issue. Um, if, you know, I I've always been of the opinion and the desire to try to get rid of the ADA issues, because I think inherently, no matter what you do. It will feel like you put a Band-Aid on it, in the future, you're still dealing with some issues. Um, the elevator won't go away unless we demo the two gyms. Um, it it could potentially go away if you raise the floor, inherently, there's other issues with that as it relates to space you've just lost. Um, so i- in my mind, it's a, it's a give and take, do you spend essentially the same amount of money to renovate the existing? And have the same, the the same, um, detail in it, instead of getting two brand-new courts. So that's, that's what I'm struggling with is almost seven million to get two courts versus six to get one.
So I think the yet point, I think we.
Yeah, even when we looked at Boardman and updating the elevator that was there, a million dollars to update that elevator to bring it to code, wasn't it a million dollars?
It's more, it's closer to a half a million.
Okay, okay. But, yeah, I mean, those, you know.
Cost of a bus wash.
So, I think to close this out, and and but to Ty, Ty's point, I wouldn't be comfortable voting on that either tonight, I, that's not what we're doing. And, and it just, we, there's, there's gonna be other discussions, but like, this is the only time as a group we can decide. So I can say something, you can say something, and then we can't bring it back together unless we're sitting here. And I think part of the point is, I may say something and believe it, but then I talk to you and you may say, so this is, I think, the guidance that you need.
Yeah.
So far.
I need enough to get started, I mean, if demo was completely off the table, that completely changes what we investigate. So I I'm just looking at a high level what the board's comfort level is as far as the budget and par- partial demo. I feel like I have enough now to sit down with the user group meeting and actually begin design.
I'm glad we could help you.
Thank you.
Well, we've got through the fir- uh, first step. Of twenty or thirty.
I know, and you say this was gonna be a short agenda.
So, um, and if you're comfortable with music and Central High, I'm gonna go ahead and thank you two for participating and bring in the next, uh, design team. Jackie, you have to say, you know that, right? John, I have you here first.
All right.
It's wonderful if you're gonna switch the name, Tim.
Yes. All right, so this is our, um, design team for Central Grade School, I'll let you guys do your introductions.
I'm John Dancer, Cornerstone Architects here in Traverse City.
I'm Gabe Alvey with Deacon Mahmon, Architecture and Engineering.
And I'm still Jack.
Just Jack.
I don't know if this is, uh, this maybe wasn't on, I think it wasn't.
All right, so let's start with Central Grade School. So, um, Central Grade, um, high-level conversation, uh, trying to get, again, some guidance on some high-level things, so we know what direction to go in. Uh, talking about budget and timeline, so we do have some information towards the end. Um, I'm gonna get started just with an overview of our visioning session and what we've heard from some constituents related to Central Grade School and what's really important. So with all of our, um, school renovations or new schools, we start with a group of diverse, um, constituents that have an interest in Central Grade. Um, we had two visioning sessions, um, one was February eighteenth, the second one was on March third. Um, we had, uh, you can read the mixture of people we had, we had a couple of board members, administration, community members, um, and some staff. We talked about some very specific things as it relates to very, very high level, again, this isn't design, it's concept, and we need to determine some of our priorities. So, we did that over the two sessions, um, I thought the sessions went great. We did get to consensus on quite a few items, which I think will help the board understand what the group itself, obviously, that's not everybody that has an interest. Um, we had Central Grade neighborhood, the city of Traverse City, so we have a good understanding from several different areas and what the priorities are. So, we did kick consensus that, um, demo is a a potential option on a couple of areas that really are not the original part of the building. So there is a courtyard shop addition from the fifties and sixties that has ADA sh- ADA issues inherently in it that, that nobody's really tied to. Um, the space itself doesn't make sense, it doesn't, uh, collaborate with other spaces. And then we did get to consensus on potential option of demoing a portion of the west wing, which is closest to Wadsworth. And the reason for that is supervision issues, um, safety and security and supervision issues. It's a, it's a wing that you have to walk a complete block to look down, to see, um, to supervise students down that wing. So, um, the other things that we talked about was, um, a very high-level priority to solve those supervision issues, um, in that west wing. In most of our elementary schools, you can walk to one or two spaces and see all the hallways and all the students that are passing between for extra supervision. At Central Grade School, you probably have to walk a block to stand at one spot. And then there's two, one, two, three other spots, you would have to stand to see the whole population on the first floor moving around. So there is inherently some issues with supervision there and safety and security, um, so that's why we discussed a potential demo of that west wing. Um, they, uh, perform more dedicated classroom space instead of some common spaces, we had some discussion about potential options for the cafeteria. Um, the main office having a central location for that line of site supervision. Um, they, we had a long conversation about the third floor and the use of it, and it was the preference of this group to keep all students on the first and second floors. There is a concern about safety and security and supervision on having students and staff on the third floor so far away from the rest of the instructional practices. And so far away from the office, should there be an emergency? So, overall, they they are recommending no student classrooms around the third floor, that we have a discussion about what would be on the third floor, but they definitely want it renovated.
It's been baited already, correct?
Partial, there's still work to be done. Um, a high level of, uh, priority to create separation of Lars and other after-school activities, like we just talked about with Central High School. There's a desire to be able to separate the ongoing daily activities from who might be coming in from the outside for the other options we have available in that building, like Lars. Um, sustainability is important, we talked a lot about sustainability. Um, we even had kind of an overview conversation about the potential of geothermal, specifically, we have some pretty high limitations on that particular. System because of our, uh, space available, we're pretty landlocked, um, given all the wells it would be needing for that size of the building, it's. It was kind of ruled out as not an option, but the group felt very, um, uh, positive about exploring those other options. Like Susanna and some other talked about, people talked about, we, we wanna explore the options, maybe not say all electrical, all electric at the beginning. But explore the cost estimates of all the different systems, so we're making the best decision. Um, but the staff was really focused on making sure budget was spent on the the instructional spaces first. The, uh, prioritizing the playground areas when determining where the cu- uh, garden would be. Um, having an immediate exit from the cafeteria to the playground, um, my understanding right now is kids are, are having to walk through the whole entire building. To get to the playground before or after lunch, and it wastes some time and it's very inconvenient, there's supervision concerns there. Um, cafeteria, making sure that the half cafeteria is a dedicated room and not part of the hallway for some noise reductions, and again, some supervision and. Uh, behavior concerns, uh, preserving that front lawn as much as possible, we even talked to the current staff about. Uh, you know, are you looking for a staff parking lot? No, their, their concern is really preserving that front lawn space for field day and things of that nature. They've been parking on the streets, the people that were there are very comfortable keeping it that way. Um, we talked about the current, um, bus, uh, drop-off area, if you will, which is on Pine Street, it's a wider street. And everybody was fine with keeping it as is, no need to put a bus loop actually on the site. Um, creating a car loop to be dedicated for the younger students, so actually having some kind of drop-off loop onsite, connected to a parking lot for the littles. Um, and then, um, yeah, merging the parent lot with the parking lot. So those were kind of the high-level things that we talked about with the group and tried to get consensus. We did lay out a lot of different drawings with some concepts and bubbles of what do you like on this one, what do you like on that one? And the team has all that information for moving forward. Uh, as it relates to the timeline and the budget, um, our timeline, as you know, is to, uh, move Central Grade here to Glen Loomis. After next school year, so they would be here for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year transitionary. Um, we are only able to fit their K-five population in this building, as long as they don't keep adding classrooms with their populations. Um, we do have to relocate tag, um, preschool and an ISD program. The thought process right now is to have preschool at Montessori, they have a classroom available that, um, can be licensed. And tag, the desire is to try to move, um, a fourth and fifth to the east side and a fourth and fifth to the west side during the transition. With a conversation at a later date with the board on, should we be planning to bring that back and house it at Central Grade School? Um, the construction, we believe, will take up to three years, so they would start occupancy in that school at twenty-nine thirty. Which again, leads into a new bond when we would also have this, this building available in Oak Park available to have a conversation as it relates to facilities. Um, so just, this is kind of a, an overview of what is currently going on in the building. Um, I'm gonna highlight the, the second bullet first, because this is our constraint. The current classes that are required to be on the first floor really, um, constrain us as it relates to how big the building's going to be. So currently, um, art, music, and library are on the second floor, it has to come down to the first floor. Uh, and we have to hold classrooms for preschool, junior kindergarten, kindergarten, and first grade on the first floor. So art, music, library, gym, cafeteria, all has to be on the first floor, which really does kind of project out how big our building's going to be as, as it relates to square footage and footprint.
Is that a licensing thing?
It, it's a code.
It's a code required.
Okay, wow.
First graders could have to be on the first floor, and you can only have second and above on a, on a floor other than the level of exit discharge.
But even the art.
Well, because they're going to, because they're going, cause they need access to art and music.
And yet, we're still talking about possibly demoing something on the west wing?
Yep, I haven't gotten to that yet, but yes. Um, and then I put on here a third floor plan, it, it will become important at some point to determine the desire of the third floor. Um, at this point, for budgeting purposes, we have kind of just designed, um, the absolute necessary renovations we need, maybe possibly large conference rooms. We always have a need for those, uh, but that's the money that's been assigned to it right now until the board makes a decision on wanting something else there.
Are you contemplating the administration being there?
I'm gonna move on. So, um, so that you know the makeup of the building, they, they have a lot of classrooms, a lot of knicks and crannies, they are currently operating seventeen K through five classrooms. They have four tag classrooms, they have one preschool, and they have an ISD program or MI-KI program. And then they have various spaces for itinerant staff. To give you kind of an understanding of, um, obviously, if there's space available, people use it. Um, they currently have a lot of itinerant and special staff in full-size classrooms that I think going forward, we could accommodate like we do in most other schools. Where it's a half a classroom, and so we could build it potentially that way. Um, that includes resource room, itinerant, um, staff that might be helping with reading or, um, math support. Um, behavior intervention, social workers, that thing, so we definitely need to accommodate space for all of those.
Can I just say one thing?
Yep.
So any of the itinerants that deal with the pre-K, so first graders also need to be on the first floor, right? Because the first graders can't move to the second floor. Other itinerants that might be for, for grade reading or something else could be on a upper level, but any of those need to be on the first floor as well.
And we typically, like at Eastern, we have a resource room on the first and the second to accommodate the appropriate grade levels. But right now, it's a half a classroom, not a full-size classroom, again, if they have the space available, they'll, they'll use it. Um, I think it's a conversation in the future about how much space they need for the activities taking place in the class.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
How does the seventeen K through five classrooms compare to Willow Hill Eastern, similar?
Um, actually, it's, it, it is very similar to the other schools, um, and then when you get to tag, obviously, you're adding force or you're at twenty-one.
Yeah.
Um, that, well, they have a lot of flexibility because of the other spaces that they have, so if they do need another classroom. They have flexibility with maybe breaking an itinerant space into half, and we could do a wall or something. Um, but making sure that when we build the building, we build enough classrooms to house whatever programs we decide are gonna be housed there. And enough classrooms extra to deal with any growth within their boundary area.
Just curious how it compared, uh, just to other, other elementary, so, yeah.
Um, actually, I do, I have some information. I have, um, so currently at Eastern, they have twenty-four classrooms.
Eastern, twenty, twenty-four.
Twenty-four classrooms.
Between two floors though, correct?
Um, Montessori is twenty-three.
These are classrooms, uh, these are classrooms, not classes, right?
Correct.
So they don't have twenty-four sections per se, they have twenty-four classrooms.
Yes, right now, Eastern's got an empty one and we're using three for preschool, but that's the number of spots that could be a classroom. Um, I think Willow Hill's at eighteen, Long Lakes at seventeen or eighteen, um, West Woods is upwards of twenty-three with that last addition.
Interesting.
But the Eastern requirements, the same as Central would be in terms of first graders on the ground, correct?
Yes.
They have a whole way. Horrible fire in the UP, long time ago, a lot of kids got murdered.
Really?
Yeah, and I think that's where in state law.
So that gives you kind of a lay of land as to how they're using some spaces and, um, the considerations that really dictate a certain number of square feet. Right now, the building is a hundred and forty-four thousand square feet, we're currently maybe at one-thirty, we could get it down to with all those essentials. Again, depending on what special programs we have, if we have enough space for those, so that's kind of one of our talking points.
You said one-thirty, but that. You said one thirty, but that assumes then the demo of the West Wing or it doesn't?
It is the total amount we need to have, the total number of classrooms that they currently have with some growth.
And we got that, yeah. Okay, whatever.
Well, let's just go there.
Yeah.
So, so this is the analysis of the building. Um, uh, we did take a look at the whole entire building. Obviously, the, the, the part of the building that starts at the gym to Lars is the the oldest part of the building, the nineteen twenty two addition that houses, it's three floors, it houses Lars. Anything to the left of that has been many renovations in the thirties and the fifties. Um, we have identified in the lighter pink color, the areas in which we would like to discuss options for demo. Um, and then the blue areas are potential additions. So surprisingly, it's actually cheaper to demo the existing spaces and add new based on how the current West Wing is, has been constructed, and I'll let you guys talk about some of the columns and some of the constraints we have in those spaces.
Sure, I, I'll just start off and Gabe, you can jump in, but you know, the way the building's constructed, you know, it was really designed to be a high school and a junior high and not really an elementary school, so it has very wide corridors that were set up with big lockers and those kinds of things with relatively small classrooms. Those columns where they are, are, fall in those corridors, and so to change those classroom sizes becomes difficult to do um, without major construction. So that's why when we build new, we can get the right sized classrooms relative to, you know, what was there before. Jump in.
Yeah, and well, we're also looking for opportunities to open up part of those areas as well as we get through design. Um, but like Christine mentioned, the columns, the columns, for whatever reason, are very erratic. They don't follow any kind of grid pattern in the building, so they're offset from each other. They shift as you go down the hallway. Um, so it's gonna be some challenges. So again, being able to remove that portion of the West Wing helps us a lot to not have to deal with that, and we can rebuild it the way we need to.
Um, the way that the blue line is situated on the left side instead of the West Wing is very intentional to deal with those supervision issues. So now we don't have this long wing that somebody has to walk from one end of the building to the other to look down the wing for supervision. Um, this really closes that up so that we have a couple of different hallways and it reduces the overall footprint and helps with safety and security and su- overall supervision during the school day. Again, it, it mirrors some of our other schools where you, you walk not too far from the main, main office and you look down one hallway, and then you, in most cases, you pass the library and look down the other hallway, and you can see all activity of students. And there's no hiding spaces, if you will. So that, that was the intentionality there with that, uh, potential design. Again, we're still working out um total square foot and what can actually be, be turned into what. Um, we've had a lot of conversations about um where the library would go and if we're going to uh, separate the library like we did at Montessori where you have two floors, two smaller libraries that accommodate the grades that are on those floor, or if you put it all on the first floor and take up some more square feet. So that's all what we're considering and discussing. Um, for today, the big thing that would help us as it relates to moving forward is, is there a comfort level with some demolition? Given the opportunity to save some money and make it more efficient and solve a lot of the issues that were very inherent um, and a, a high priority for the um visioning sessions that we had and, and the principal, who's still here?
We made her way all the time.
So, um, from an architect's perspective, in terms of capacity, if we demo and then reconstruct, we're not losing capacity at this point?
No, we, we, we would be, we would actually be gaining, we're right sizing it to have the right amount of capacity. A- and again, I mean, we're, we're looking at it in terms of that twenty two classroom piece, so to speak.
So why would we be against you demoing if it's not gonna affect capacity?
Well, it, it.
I'm just looking for.
It is gonna reduce, it is gonna reduce.
It will reduce some capacity, but whether you have tag or not, isn't gonna be, um, it n- not, might not necessarily be that makes a big difference if you have tech, because obviously don't have to get them on the first floor. Um, this does outline an addition first and second floor because the difference of adding first, uh, a first floor only and the second, it, it is uh pretty efficient with money to actually get two floor spaces. And if we do have tag, we'll need that space. So again, does it need to be a little bit bigger? Maybe, maybe. We need to have that conversation, but our goal right now is to make sure the first floor has enough space for all the things that are required to be on the first floor. And we do have an overall, at least I have an overall target of trying to reduce the overall size of the building for issues related to uh energy efficiency, cost, supervision, cleaning, um, those things.
And this, this wing of the building, I mean, from what I remember, there are some tiny, tiny classrooms. I mean, right?
The teachers were talking about that.
Yes.
No storage, there's storage, the changes for different teachers throughout the building.
Right.
That's correct.
Yeah, really, really challenging.
And then there's also, wasn't there some ADA?
Yeah, there's all kinds of level changes.
Considerations. Yeah, yeah.
That's what we're trying to solve.
That was what like the old farm house was, was put on in the shop.
Listen, you need to go visit the old hospitals, run an elevator and then you press a button for here and you go half a floor and on that side, you go another floor.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, and I'd love to hear too from Gianna, just Mrs. Dougay, to, to, being a part of all these visioning sessions and, and how did, the feedback just on demolition versus um adding on. Any, any feedback to give the board?
I like the idea of the demolition as far as, you know, creating more space for the first floor and I just can't stress enough, I like, I, I vote all of the ideas that would be helpful. The biggest one is just the resources it takes, just new duty, you know, two people to line kids up to two people to walk, and I like that for movie people, tour outside, tour outside. Meanwhile, one's trying to quickly wipe all of the tables and just walking down that huge hallway order if it was, you know, but you also have your, your benchy, people outside, so, um, just seating, getting rid of some of those big orders, the big hallways, it's, that would just be efficient, just humanized and, and efficient supervision. And maybe I could ask about some schedules for the rest. I love the shafts, but the efficiency is, it's just.
Do you think, do you envision the additions in blue that the cafeteria would obviously be moved into one of those spaces, right?
Not necessarily. Um, we're still looking at the potential. Um, those, the, the highlighted blue on the left would be classrooms. Um, we, we were initially, again, concept, not design, we were initially thinking the classroom that's now kindergarten with that like fireplace bump out could potentially be the library. Um, and we were looking at the small gym as the cafeteria.
But the blue area would include the kitchen and receiving and mechanical.
Okay. Okay, so the small gym would be the cafeteria.
Potentially.
Potentially, okay.
That eliminates the small gym, or is it relocate?
Um.
Is there a need for two gyms at a?
Well, I mean, that's another question. We don't have more than one gym at any other elementary school. So I, I don't have in my proposal maintaining two. Obviously, that would have a major impact on total square foot.
There's also in the small gym, there's some fairly significant historical pieces um, with uh the brick pattern and the clay tile that's there that we would really like to preserve as part of the character of the building.
And because we have the height, we're able to raise the floor to be at ground level and still have it be a cafeteria.
Yeah, cuz it's, the floor level's down four feet, but we would be raising it up so that it's all in the same level.
That's, that's another fun.
Yeah, no, we'd be raising it up.
It was my understanding though, that the gyms were used both gyms all day.
There are, there are times where there are cases of, with the number of classes currently right now, we, we do use both gyms. Yeah, but am I right, Christian, in the, like, for example, the gym at the Montessori, that that cannot be divided into two?
No, I, um, my comment, and no disrespect, but um the other elementary schools with the same number of students have one gym and we make it work again. When you have space available, people use it. I, I'm not gonna make the decision on whether they should have a second gym or not. I think it makes a major, there's a major impact on budget and overall floor plan, but that would be something the board would have to decide. We, we weren't planning to maintain two. We were planning to do an elementary sized gym like the other elementary schools in the district.
Is that big?
Some of that scheduling, as far as, you know, we know they have two gyms, so you can schedule two teachers at the same time, but if it can work at Eastern, right, our next biggest elementary school that has one gym, you can just schedule differently as far as when the PE teacher's at Central Grade and not double off.
Was, this was discussed at the visioning, I'm assuming, that you're a part of the visioning?
Yeah, we talked about it. We, there was no consensus on it. I think overall, the staff there would prefer to have two, but we didn't really come to consensus on it.
John, when, when you get into this, obviously there's a massive boiler system in the basement and lots of hot water heat.
Super scary. It's super scary.
That's the pink area that's going away.
Actually lives there.
No joking, when we did a tour, we went down there and the steam pipe burst.
I spent ten summers down there trying to get air conditioning in Lars Hockstead. So I'm intimately familiar with the氵 homes down there, but um.
Yeah, so the plan would be that that whole old boiler system is, is totally.
As well as the hot water heat system?
As well as the hot water heat system. We're talking about a completely new mechanical and electrical system.
In a different location.
More of a heat pump concept than?
Possibly, yep.
That's to be explored with sustainability.
Yep.
Committee, um, priorities and cost estimates and comparisons and what would work for this size building.
Those vents are dirt.
Yeah.
Dirt chambers. Moving air from one end to the other.
Well, just cleaning them up would probably give you a remarkable efficiency.
I don't know, they're coal stained, so I don't know, but it would.
I am assuming we are considering the possibility of air conditioning in Lars.
That's up for discussion quite a bit later. That, that's gonna be our task is to cost estimate and provide options with the overall budget once we know the other pieces in part. So if there's a comfort level with, with demo, understanding that our goal is to make the building more efficient and better for supervision and and in all of the cost estimates actually cheaper to build um versus de- um renovating existing space. If, if the group is okay with that, we can move forward with that in mind and actually start our um design process. Those numbers and figures will come later as we know our total square foot, what room we have for mechanical, um, we'll have all that information much later as it relates to those options. It'd be way too early to, to determine that and how it could affect the budget.
So like the question to this is the addition, right?
Demolition and addition.
And the other thing is, we talked somewhat about parking because people who use Lars Hockstead usually come at night or in the evening. A lot of times they're older and you, you're having them walk through the streets, uh, falling in, in uh the winter, all that kind of thing. We did get a few extra parking spaces, I believe.
Yeah, our goal is to increase parking, um, potentially where it exists to, to try to get some kind of parent loop for drop off.
Right.
Without taking up too much screen space, but the thought processes of a separate dedicated parking lot for Lars wasn't recommended.
No, well, there was a room.
Yeah, there's a space, yeah.
Unless you did underground parking.
That's the other way to go, friend.
But there were a few extra parking spaces, not many.
We, we absolutely can get a few more in.
Yeah, I mean, I entrust that, you know, the right decisions regarding demolition, you know, the right questions were asked and our professionals and um, you know, the community is okay again, you know, with that and, and, you know, the principal and.
And they had a very large scope vision, vision group.
Right, 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 right.
How many were on them?
Thirty?
Thirty, you know, they had, they met multiple times and represented students.
That's right.
Board members, Central Neighborhood Association.
Yeah.
City, you know, had a, a whole cross. Are we unanimous on this, this part, the addition, demolition?
Yes.
I wasn't a part of it, so Beth could tell you.
They, they were, there was consensus around the need to do some demo in addition to get our priorities.
Yeah.
This demo.
Yes.
Here, and that's, I mean, that's, I'm, and Jana's supportive and that's all I really need here. So this fifty five million including is demo? Yes. Okay. And is this fifty five million just standard status quo mechanicals? This is not, say, heat pumps or any?
It's a very high level estimate.
Okay.
At this point, we're using percentages.
Okay.
Because there's so much we don't know. Obviously, the footprint, the total square foot's gonna make a difference in a lot of these decisions. Um, we're just trying to get off to a great start.
At some point, could we get options related to like
Oh, yeah.
Status quo, fully electric, somewhere in the middle?
Yes.
We can get those options at some point.
Once we have our design.
Yeah, absolutely.
It'll be easier to incorporate that.
Well, I, again, I, I support the demolition of the visioning.
Yeah, we supported it, makes sense.
And Jana supports it.
And I wanted to make sure, I added this last slide, slide just to make sure, you know, we did study Central Grade School from a very high level perspective as a part of our uh facility study, and at that time, it was estimated that um, it would cost forty two million trade cost construction only. In twenty four, twenty five, clearly we won't be beginning construction for a couple of years and naturally, there's going to be inflation um predicted. So we, we tried our best to get to what we think we can live within with some of those factors, based on when we think we're actually gonna be in construction. Again, full disclaimer, we don't know if there's gonna be tariffs or more inflation than what you predicted, and there's a lot of unknowns when you have multi-year projects.
I was surprised to hear a three year project, and is that specifically just because of the complexity of Central Grade or of just the renovation versus like Eastern?
It's twof- it's twofold. It's given our history with projects lately and the fact that the bud- the timeframes that we're trying to do it when we have workers that are not interested in overtime is nearly impossible. And I am always the proponent of build in much more time and try to get done early. Um, but we have not been successful in a couple of big projects and it's frustrating, but I don't see that changing. So I would rather plan for three. I highly doubt you'd be able to open a school year early because I don't see it getting done in two, maybe two and a half, and we're able to use it for other things until they move in, but I, I think it's nearly impossible to do in two years, given the scope of it.
Yeah, it's like what happened at Montessori. Once we finished it, we couldn't.
And we would rather be, like, if it's wider in that thought, right now.
Yeah, I got it, okay.
Jack, where, where are you staging?
What's that?
Where are you gonna stage for this? Where's your lay down areas and all that?
The whole site.
Somewhere on that block.
Whose house are we buying?
Yeah, right, there you go. Yeah. Like breakfast, maybe?
The, the nice thing with that one, obviously, they know students or staff will be there, so it's gonna be a lot easier. There, there's not phasing necessarily. It's a lot easier to just tackle it all at once when we move the students here.
We'll have to coordinate traffic flows and construction entrance and all that stuff, but.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
It's two one-way streets and so, we'll have to figure that out.
Getting one piece that's in here, we mentioned, you know, the board has gotten feedback that, that some board members have given me from parents and things is of tag, you know, of some inequities, only having one, and could you hook transportation? Some of that, if you had it on both sides of the town, I think that's something as we go along here, we're gonna wanna explore and look at. You know, the question, you know, we have a lot of questions to do some studying this summer. How many end up generally are from one side of town and how many from the other? You know, how many kids maybe if we survey don't test because they just know they don't have transportation? Like, there's lots of questions with that that, you know, we're wondering. Um, so again, based off of some parent feedback that the boards had, you know, is that, you know, that's something that we think we wanna explore if the boards could let us explore in that.
And don't you think like that conversation will need to happen sooner than later, cuz you're talking about how many classrooms?
You know, and, but that could be, yeah, there's twofold. There's one, we're gonna have to move them out of there and kinda, you know, what's that look like in from space wise? We probably feel like we're gonna have to do that, but again, just in the end, do you, you, if we think we keep it that way, do we eventually see it coming back? Like, that's kind of the question we're gonna have to answer here. We got a little time and we wanna do some studying and bring some data to the board. You know, again, on what's our participation numbers look like from one side? Where the, generally, what are the schools those kids would live in their home school? Some of that to have some thoughts on what that might look like.
Tag can't come here, right?
No, have it up from Pre-Tag and preschool.
Have you thought about where, just in the interim?
We're looking still, you know, in, in a lot, you know, depends on how many preschool sections we have, those kind of things. Does preschool get cut? You know, like, there's lots of things up in the air still of what buildings they could, you know, we could move, you know, maybe that to fit us a lot of room in, so we're still trying to get some thoughts of what that would look like, but we have a little time still.
As far as the number of classrooms needed in the building, one of the things we have available to us is the third floor, although the staff would prefer not to have classrooms up there. You do have the space if you wanna keep the footprint of the building down and not add those classrooms to the first two floors of total square foot to utilize that space as classrooms. It, it wasn't preferable, but it certainly is an option if there isn't a decision made when we have to know for sure how many classrooms to plan.
There was some discussion of using those, that third floor for fifth grade.
Yes. If push comes to shove, it's available.
And, and one of the things, you know, you. And and one of the things, you know, you could think about too is as the board again looks at facility planning and that maybe third year of the strategic plan is questions asked about central office, questions asked about this, like, you know, there's, you could do professional development space. You know, like, there's lots of possibilities there that may be in the next bond you consider. You know, if you wanted to build out more of that, you possibly could, but, you know, from a budget standpoint, I think right now the thought is just, you know, doing the code what has to be done and then it would give you the chance to explore what do you do with that third floor. We don't have a lot of great professional development space and it's just like it's large and open, you know, and and so that's one possibility. But again, I think that could be up for real discussion from the board in the future of what that looks like down the road. It's going to have to be at least brought to code though and renovated.
And it just classrooms up there, correct? I mean, I remember going up there a couple of times.
Currently, but again, when it's renovated and cleaned all that, I don't know you'll have as many, you know, at least initially.
So that was two questions, not that it matters right now, what's the square foot of the third?
Twenty three thousand square feet.
Yeah.
It's big.
Yeah.
That would be nice.
It's been partially abated, mostly abated.
I mean, it it just needs it all.
It's just.
We've done some things over the years, it still needs abatement.
And it's been closed since, I think, nineteen seventy?
When did West Middle School open?
Nineteen seventy.
Eighteen seventy.
Seventy.
Nineteen seventeen.
And my last, like, out of all the high, or out of all the schools, sorry, I feel like being in a city is that one see less fluctuation in student count versus a quartet that has, you know, at least when you get have places that could be building new housing, is that one a little bit?
It is less fl- um fluctuation because of the demand for open enrollment in schools of choice.
You get a lot of people that do work in the city and wanna bring their kid into the city. So it does have a decent large school of choice contingent, which you can control with how much you wanna bring in and open enrollment from that standpoint.
So shooting for five hundred.
That that's been the overall thought process for an elementary school.
Five hundred.
So what do you need on central?
I feel like I've gotten it, I feel like there's an openness to demo and addition. Um now we can actually move forward and start designing, bring back reports.
I would love if you could separate a reporter number for air conditioning Lars because I think I could find some people that might be interested in helping in that process and and I'm familiar with these in the summertime, so.
Yeah.
Lars in the summertime without some kind of air conditioning is not someplace you wanna be.
Couple of graduations, that'd be pretty intense, I feel like the last model would.
That will take some time just given, you know, starting with design and not knowing what system we go with and how it all works. But we will absolutely have comparisons for all of that.
And on utilities and and efficiency too, I mean, one of the things I think we also have to be careful or remember is that when we invest money for sustainability, then we can use that money, that creates general fund, potentially general fund money. So we've got a an unusual equation as well from a board and construction where those pots, that all those pots, and you can only use certain ones, and we've gotta make sure we use the right ones for the
Right.
Right pots, so.
Well, most of the air conditioning will be electric, so.
No, that was not a comment to that one, so, yeah.
A little deep pump.
Okay.
Living in the shop.
So have you, uh, heat pumps are coming along? Uh, so, uh, I think that we covered this, uh, well, we're still on super tense.
Yeah. So I will, I will kinda go quick, I think, with a few here. Legislative update, there's nothing really happening. Um, there's a little bit of a stalemate, we don't think we'll see targets until after the May revenue consensus at this point from the state. And really not much of an update there. District highlights a few, um, we have our, uh, we opened our TCAP's Innovation and Manufacturing Centers at both west and central. Great participation, I think the board members that were able to make that, again, outstanding opportunity to display and and have those for our kids.
Thanks everyone for attending as well.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Uh, for the twentieth consecutive year, we've been awarded the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting uh for our annual conference of financial report, um, recognizing the district's dedication to financial transparency and excellence. Uh, we had the K TCAP's K twelve district art show, um, opening reception was good times, uh, showcasing all the incredible talents of our K twelve students, refreshments were donated by Orianna and MIBIC Insurance, Harvard Agency and Tom's Food Market. Special thanks to all the art teachers who are setting up the show, the art show runs through the twenty fifth and it's open to the public during Glenn Loomis office hours, so if somebody wants to come in, they can come inside in the office and be able to check out all the great artwork and, you know, board members able to produce that as you came in. Uh, DARE program graduation, this is something new that, um, I was called by, um, our sheriff, Mike Shea, uh, earlier this year. He had a new deputy that was trained in a in an updated DARE program. Uh, so the fifth graders at Cherry Knoll participated in that DARE pilot program and had their program graduation. So, uh, Grant, the Grand T- Erbers County Sheriff's Department Deputy McKenzie, um, Kriner taught the fifth grade students about risk and consequences. Stress, communication styles, bullying, alcohol, tobacco, resistance strategies, vaping, deer decision making model. And help networks, Cherry Knoll's the first school in TCAP that started this program after several years, Sheriff Shea and her sheriff Phyllis and several other deputies attended the graduation, so I'll meet with him to talk about all that went and possibly expansion and we'll talk about that moving forward.
How long did that take?
Um, I think it was an all-year-long program, just but different days, I think that they do that.
Like a day, an hour a week sort of thing?
Something like that, yeah, yeah, but I haven't had the chance to really debrief with them on it. Um, Dan had the chance to go over for the graduation, um, and so we'll we'll get more details on that and and give an update with the board.
Yeah, I'd be interested.
Yeah. Uh, TC TC West German American Partnership Program, so the TC West Gap has been recognized by the US Department of State for its outstanding support, uh, for the twenty twenty four Gap Program. Uh, to this honor highlights TC West's commitment to fostering international understanding and providing invaluable youth exchange opportunities. Kerry Labatte has been instrumental in this program. March was reading month and a success around the district, uh, students and staff celebrated reading with various activities and guest readers. Some of which included our state Senator John Namus, uh, State Representative Betsy Kopia. Blair Elementary had a special guest visit with Monte from the Pit Spitters. Uh, and at Blair, every student that read for fifteen minutes each day in March will be able to attend a Pit Spitters game this summer. So thanks to everybody over there with the Pit Spitters.
And your next report, if you could tell us how many kids are gonna get to bed in a week.
Yeah. And that's all I have with that.
Um, any questions? We are moving on to board committee discussion, there are quite a few, so I would ask that, um, anything we can do, I'm not watching anyone, but anything we can do to expedite or at least be efficient is would be great, but first day of board curriculum committee, trustee pack.
Um, there were three new courses approved for the, uh, middle school. Uh, we talked about the field trips, robotics, going to Houston tomorrow. Uh, and then West Senior High, um, is, uh, going to DC for the Academic World Quest National Competition. And most of that, uh, the costs associated with that for the students will be covered by the International Affairs Forum. Um, then we talked, uh, about the attendance absenteeism as a topic. Absences, missing more than one half day of the school, it does not include, uh, cut classes. And we also talked about chronically absent, who are students that miss ten percent or more school days, which is approximately two days a week. Uh, TCAP's, our absenteeism is actually going down, our attendance went up a little bit in the twenty three, twenty four. Um, time period elementary, our attendance is basically ninety two point seven, middle school ninety five point one. High school, it's ninety point four. Um, and the state overall is ninety point eight, TCAP's overall is ninety three point one. Um, all abs- of all absences, eighty three percent are excused. Uh, eleven percent are not excused, that's just somebody basically doesn't show up. And then six percent are school activities and they don't actually count as absences. So like going to a athletic or some kind of a competition wouldn't count. Looking at our chronically absent in elementary school of the the overall absences, twenty four point six percent are chronically absent. So that means that of the absent group for elementary, these are kids that are missing at minimum roughly two, two days of school a month. Middle school, it's thirteen point one, high school, it's thirty five point four. Our overall chronically absent group at TCAP's is twenty point nine. Um, and there is a process for how they notify connect the family when they begin to see a pattern. I won't go through that, but I have it if anyone's interested. Um, we also had a real interesting piece of information that I think, um, Jesse prepared on the first semester for this school year, uh, looking at high school data. And for students who attend ninety to a hundred percent of the time, those students' average GPA is three point two six, which is roughly a B plus. And the average number of courses failed was zero point zero seven, so negligible. For students who missed seventy to eighty nine, or were there in attendance seventy to eighty nine percent of the time, the average GPA was two point seven one, which is roughly a B minus, C plus on a grading system. And the average number of courses they failed was point three five. For students that missed, that were there, uh, fifty to sixty nine percent of the time, their grade points on average were one point four nine, which is roughly a little under a D plus, if you think letter grades. And they average two point three seven failed courses. So you can see exponentially, it's just going up. Students that missed fifty percent or more, their average GPA was point, uh, nine two and they were failing three point four five classes on average. So it behooves us to try and get kids to come to school. That's what I think that is. And I think I can let that go. Our next, um, curriculum committee is going to be April twenty ninth in the afternoon at two o'clock.
Okay. Thank you, any questions? Um, board finance committee, April third, reporting out by trustee Harry.
Okay, we had some highlights and some lowlights, we'll start with a low light. Erica ceded control of the finance committee to to be and it was unanimous. Um, I'd like to thank the First Congregational Church for their donation, which we'll be dealing with later. Christine presented a number of current project updates, we talked a little about future projects. And the projects that we approved, they're on the consent calendar, if you have questions, I assume you would have pulled them. And then we adjourned and we will meet again on May first at eight fifteen, right here, right then.
Okay, thank you, um.
Yeah, come on, step on.
Yeah, no, you were doing too fast for me, so, uh, board executive committee, I will pour it out, um, obviously procedural items. Everything was passed through, so things that were, we did discuss the agenda review and I do want to, uh, um, apologize for the needed changes, um. I did also manage to, I hopefully have, uh, should receive confirmation as well that I should be able to now attend the April twenty eighth study session as well. So we did go through all the, uh, items there, we went through staffing updates, we have had twenty five retirees, eight resignations. So that is, um, more than it has been, uh, we have general postings for core positions and and special education. There's an indigenous coordinator position available as well. And there is open interviews for all sorts of positions at the TCAP's administration building uh, on April sixteenth this week from eight AM to ten AM. We did have a communications, uh, update, uh, the strategic plan, four thousand seven hundred and thirty six responses. Um, and we've had focus groups which have since happened as well. Uh, graduation banner campaign, we have a total of twelve graduation banners displaying on Front Street between May nineteenth and June thirteenth. Four banners each representing the district's high schools, uh. And then, um, thi- this program may be going away, uh, unfortunately as well. Uh, we've already covered the donation, which we'll cover again later today, um, other than that, we adjourned at four thirty seven. The next board executive committee meeting is Thursday, May first at four PM. Any questions? Uh, moving on to sustainability, uh, reporting out by trustee Smith.
Yeah, I mean, I wish this was Holly, uh, reporting out, um, but she she chaired and and facilitated a fantastic uh, meeting, her her sister Sarah was there from the Children's Garden, we talked about streamlining greenhouses and school gardens, I had in my notes that Holly said to learn how to feed ourselves and and I think it's important. We were reminded earlier tonight that that the sustainability committee was, uh, Holly's idea. And and, um, I hope that we will do our best to honor, um, that and and hopefully we can bring that into our strategic plan, um, as well and make it a priority. Uh, we had a representative from Interlock and we again talked about their climate action plan, um, the 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 committee was tasked with highlighting maybe three priorities to to consider, you know, things like land use and management, transportation, emissions reductions. Um, and and one thing we did learn, uh, that none of our solar panels work, uh, none of our three solar panels. So, uh, Traverse Heights, West Woods and Central High School are all not working.
Lack of sound or they just are malfunctioning?
They're just not working, I don't know. And 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 May Mattie, who was a senior at Central High School, attended and and I'm and I'm really happy we have student voice and student representation there and I hope that the students continue to to attend our meetings and and our next meeting is this Thursday, right here, I believe, at three thirty.
Okay. Thank you, any questions? Moving on to nutrition and fitness, uh, reporting out by trustee pack.
I'll keep it very brief, uh, apparent, we had, uh, feedback on um, elementary schools for Cherry Knoll and central grade fitness programs that they were developing uh, in the schools and Ty suggested that maybe in time they'd like to add a newsletter that would kinda highlight that as kind of an internal document that might be.
Just clear, I did not recommend that they do, but we did have once before and I think Alice and Cass maybe had recommended talking about what we're doing now.
Doing something like that, further communication across those who are interested in doing that, those kinds of projects. And then Justin Thorington, um, talked about having thirty five hundred, thirty five hundred seventy students participating in sports programs for, uh, spring, fall and winter. Um, and that that seems to be growing. Um, that is not individual students, cause some students took more than one sport in the course of things and um, do you think that pretty much covered it?
I believe so, we talked a little bit about elementary PE curriculum also and how we're we're doing, uh, uh, online pilot as far as teacher materials go.
Yes, yes, we did, yes, and that we're still waiting to hear finally, uh, what's gonna happen with funding the school, lunches and breakfast.
Yeah, and then, uh, Tom Free is head of, um, our food services, we talk about that, it's almost a, and uh, standing agenda item as far as free and reduce and where it's going, how it impacts uh, food service employees and our kids, we don't know where it's gonna land for next year. And then, of course, we talked a little bit about the free and reduce form.
Right.
Getting ideas from food service, how to improve that process.
Um, end of the report out then, um, we will move on to board office hours, uh, reporting out for trustee Ballinger is trustee Moon Mo.
So Josie asked that I just read uh her statement, so she said she had one community member show up at. The virtual board office hours on Mar- March thirteenth, Bill Weisner. Uh since Mr. Weisner right regularly makes public comments at our board meeting. She appreciated the opportunity to ask him some more questions, one-on-one, to better understand where he's coming from. And to share her own Christian upbringing and perspective on uh the issues that matter to him, we listened to each other and had a respectful dialogue. So she just, we wanted to say we continue to welcome community members at our monthly office hours. And we are gonna alternate between being virtual and being in person at the uh Tattle Main Branch downtown to maximize attendance. So please come, we wanna hear from you. And actually, moving on to our next uh board office hours, April twenty fourth, just thank you Beth for switching with me, it was supposed to be. Me, but I've gotta take my daughter downstate, so I appreciate you doing that and I'll fill in for Beth in November, I think, right, November? Yeah, so, thank you.
As you said, the board next board office hours is April twenty fourth, in person at the Pennsylvania District Labor Board.
All are welcome.
Yeah.
Yes, in person, that's right.
Okay, without any other report outs, move on to consent, do I have a proposal to, or motion to approve the consent coming that has amended?
Second.
Second, all those opposed say aye.
Aye.
Both quiet ayes, but at least a couple.
I was thinking that, I just didn't say it.
Um all those opposed say nay, that's the most important one, so we're good there, motion carries. One, two, three, I can actually get, I didn't hear a physical, I need four physical ayes, so yes, thank you. Um perfect, uh all those opposed say nay, so it usually won't matter, but as long as I hear a majority. Discussion, moving on to school safety update, thanks Dr. Benweger.
Okay, uh last fall, one of our TCAP families reached out to trustee, actually secretary Ballinger. About a grant focused on the cardiac health and wellbeing of our students. Patrick McManus applied for the grant, working very closely with the foundation over the last couple of months. The, this involved numerous communications, detailed documentation outlining the necessity. For AEDs within the district and a genuine commitment to demonstrating the positive impact these devices would have on student safety. Uh we're pa- uh pleased to announce that the Thomas Smith Memorial Foundation has generously pledged to donate seven new AEDs to our district. This foundation, also known as Tommy's Heart, has a straightforward mission. Uh to prevent families from suffering the loss of a child by preventing early detection and education for teenage heart ailments. Across, across Michigan, Tommy's Heart has been instrumental in equipping students with life-saving AED devices and providing critical. Education on cardiac health to staff and students. Their proactive approach has undoubtedly made a tangible difference in promoting student safety and preventing potent- potential tragedy statewide. This donation will significantly enhance the safety and wellbeing of our TCAP students and staff. By providing immediate access to more potentially life-saving interventions in the event of a sudden cardiac arrest and critical emergency, medical emergency. Where every second counts, the availability of these AEDs ensures a quicker response time, increasing the chances of survival. For any student or staff member experiencing such an event on school grounds. On behalf of our students, families and all of our TCAP staff, we'd like to thank the Thomas Smith Memorial Foundation for their support in this generous donation.
Any other questions other than thanks, so we'll move on to board policy, uh four one one three Michigan Sick Time Act, by Connie Taylor.
Yeah, very simple this month, um as you know, late February, the legislature passed and the governor signed. Michigan's Earned Sick Time Act, also known as ESTA. And as a result, Trune has enacted a policy to reflect those changes. I can assure you that their business office and HR office have been busy making sure that we are fully in compliance with that stuff. Um and I can share out that we are, um but this would need board approval, we're recommending that the board approve the policy as presented this evening.
Any discussion, it's pretty straightforward one.
I move that the Board of Education approve board policy four one one three Michigan Earned Sick Time, Sick Time Act as discussed.
Second, uh Tammy, please conduct the roll call vote.
Uh trustee Moonmore, yes, trustee Beck.
Yes.
Trustee Hardy.
Aye.
Trustee Schmuck.
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore.
Yes, motion carries. Uh moving on to the next discussion item, which is social host responsibility proclamation resolution. I wish I had uh passed the chair before I tried to say that, but I will pass the chair to Erica, not be um. Because I am gonna abstain from any discussion or participation due to my work. Uh outside of the board, um but please do not take that as any. Anything other than I believe in obviously responsible drinking um as well, so.
Great, so I will defer to Connie Taylor.
So annually, we come to the board at this time of year, getting ready to go into celebration season, summer months. Um and this resolution, the board worked very hard on last year to do some tweaks and modifications. But essentially, the resolution is encouraging safe consumption um for adults and also for adults. To take additional steps and actions to prevent uh teenager underage um utilization of illicit drugs. Or recreational drugs, alcohol and tobacco products. So it's recommended that the board adopt the resolution as presented.
Just a quick question, do we post these kinds of proclamations or do anything with them besides from just basically give approval by the board?
I'm pretty sure they're on our website.
From the marketing office, we do put them on our website and we do uh post it in the next newsletter.
What were the tweaks we did last year?
It mostly involved uh not just alcohol, but other, other drugs.
And then there's a footnote down at the bottom that went on to further define and provide additional clarification on what those meant.
So are you looking for a motion?
Looking for a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the social host responsibility proclamation resolution as discussed.
Second.
Uh Tammy, please conduct the roll call vote. Trustee Hardy.
Aye.
Trustee Beck.
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore.
Yes.
Trustee Schmuck.
Yes.
And trustee Bell.
I have a say.
Uh so with that, I will go ahead and read the um, the resolution. Uh whereas underage use of alcohol, tobacco and recreational drugs are a problem affecting our community, our health and our future. It ex- exacts a significant toll on individuals and families and places a costly tax burden on the community at large. For law enforcement, medical services and other social services involved in the prevention and treatment of underage alcohol, tobacco. And or recreational drugs. And whereas underage use of alcohol, tobacco and or recreational drugs may have severe consequences. Many of which parents and caregivers may not be fully aware. Consequences of the above may include injury or death from accidents, overdoses and other adverse health effects up to and including death. Unintended, unwanted and unprotected sexual activity, academic problems and further drug use. And whereas parents and caregivers have a significant influence on young people's decisions about alcohol, tobacco and recreational drug use by young people. Especially when they create supportive and nurturing environments free of these substances. And whereas alcohol, tobacco and recreational drug use by young people is dangerous. Not only because of the risks associated with acute impairment, but also because of the grave threat to their long-term development and physical and mental health. And whereas, parents, educators and community leaders who work with our young people every day are our best advocates for responsible decision-making. And whereas it is illegal for adults to knowingly allow their underage child or their child's underage friends to consume alcohol, tobacco. And or recreational drugs in their home, even with the permission of the friend's parents. And as, whereas adults have the authority and responsibility to take steps to reduce the likelihood that their homes will become venues. For underage consumption of alcohol, tobacco and or re- recreational drugs. Now therefore, be it resolved, Traverse City area public schools of Grand Traverse County, a community committed to the. Preser- I'm sorry, prevention of underage alcohol, tobacco and or recreational drug use does hereby proclaim. That April twenty twenty-five is social host responsibility month. We also call upon all parents, family members, citizens, homeowners and property owners to host gatherings responsibly. And take measures to eliminate alcohol a- a- access to alcohol, tobacco and recreational drugs. Drugs, pro- products to persons under the age of twenty-one. The motion to approve this proclamation carries. Thank you. Oh, sorry, there we go, okay, so I'll hand it back over to Scott.
Aye, and the next agen- item on the agenda is staff appreciation recognition, to burn, deferring to Dr. Benweger.
Okay, um and again, this is. We take all the different opportunities, we have lots of different appreciation, it's, it's traditionally in, in um May fifth through ninth, the teacher appreciation. But we have rec- traditionally recognize all of our staff um at that time. So this is an opportunity for us to do that and thank everybody that works in our school systems. You know, obviously with, with budget, you know, budgetary constraints and budget rules, we can't really buy gifts a lot. We're trying to do some things of some supplies that we can do, that we can, you know, give our staff and looking in to, to be able to do something during that week with that. But this is an opportunity, so um normally, I believe our secretary would read this, but I think. I, I believe our secretary asked Erica if she would read this one too, if I remember right, for the staff appreciation special recognition.
Uh you know what, I don't have that. Okay, 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 yes, sorry, sorry, I was trying to fill something out. Uh so staff appreciation, special recognition, May fifth through the ninth, twenty twenty-five. In alignment with natural, National Teacher Appreciation Week, Traverse City area public schools board of education publicly acknowledges and recognizes. All staff members of Traverse City area public schools. On behalf of our greater community, we acknowledge the dedication and commitment of all employees, including those who teach, clean the schools, drive the buses. Answer the phones, design curriculum, enhance technology, coach, direct, communicate, train, hire, finance. And lead the daily operations of our district. Schools are the hub of a community and TCAPs is no exception. Our community takes great pride in the ongoing successes of our students and all the program, and all programming. It is said it takes a village to raise a child and today we honor all staff of Traverse City area public schools. Who make our village a vibrant, safe and rewarding place for children to learn and grow.
And we would need a motion for that.
Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve that May fifth through the ninth, twenty twenty-five is the TCAP staff appreciation special recognition week as discussed.
Second. Alright, uh Tammy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Uh trustee Moonmore.
Yes.
Trustee Hardy.
Aye.
Trustee Beck.
Yes.
Trustee Schmuck.
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore.
Yes, motion carries. Uh moving on to what is now item E, facilitating storage building, Beth, you uh put it up.
I just had one question and that was, do you know the square footage? On that, how big that storage facility is?
I believe I do. I do not. You don't have it with me, I'm sorry.
Do you have a sense of how big uh dimension wise it is?
Yes, but I, if I throw something out there, it's going to be drastically wrong. There's, there's a portion of the building that is set aside for facility storage, um for equipment and for furniture and everything else that we store. We've lost a lot of storage opportunities throughout the district, um selling Brita Voss, remodeling Saban, trying to get it all into one area. We also have a, a portion of the building that has been designed with a small amount of climate control in case we need to um. Store items for curriculum or for um our SSN program. Um so we identified that area for them, um if there's an opportunity that is needed, which will come at some point as we transition. Some of our staff to Saban and some of our staff likely to Central High School.
So most of it is not under climate control.
Correct.
Get that number though and I'll share it with the board tomorrow.
This is a pre-engineered building attached to the existing and we attached it on purpose because otherwise code would have required us to add a bathroom.
I hear you, I do, the reason that I asked was simply that I just redid a bond. And it's about a little under a thousand square feet and it's sixty-five uh thousand dollars, not. And that's why I was thinking, whoa, Nellie, you must have one heck of a.
We have some great issues that we have to deal with, um as it relates to leveling the building to the current building. Um it is a much larger size as it relates to square footage and we also have taller ceilings for some of our bigger equipment.
I've got thirteen foot ceilings. Yeah, I just thought, I was wondering if it was more because commercially and we had to go through certain hoops. It added enormous amount of cost, and that's what.
I think it's just dictated by size and location, given the um earthwork that has to, has to happen in order to get it where we need it to go.
It's a fairly large facility.
Oh, it has to be.
Yeah, but we'll share what it is tomorrow.
Thank you.
Um okay, um now that is now, are we still okay to approve that, if so, do I have?
I'm uh make the motion that we approve the storage facility expenditure as described. In the agenda.
We, I think we will have to have a dollar.
Was consent, so the detail isn't there?
It's a capital, it's. I recommend that we approve the capital equipment project for storage facility building. Not to exceed nine hundred twenty-two thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Which includes a ten percent uh contingency. And to be funded by capital bonds.
Second.
Yep, I think I've got everything. Perfect, second, um Tammy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Beck.
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore.
Yes.
Trustee Hardy.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
And Moonmore.
Yes, motion carries. Uh moving on to the final discussion item, um obviously we have a, a board member vacancy. And I know there's been, I've heard some opinions, but definitely no consensus and obviously we have to figure out what we're gonna do to. Uh figure, to fill that position, um I need two lines, well, three lines of thought is. One, we can fill the position today from the existing pool of applicants from the last, since it was so close. Second, we could do that, this, the same process, existing pool and do it on April twenty eighth. That is, I think, the last day we have to do it, so that is always a danger if the meeting is canceled, it is legally a problem, but that is. We may have the twenty ninth, so that's the other option. And then I know that it was uh asked of me about reopening the process and having new applicants. I don't have the uh authority to obviously make that decision, this is a board decision. I do feel like we just had a recent pool and uh. Yeah, it hasn't changed much, that's my kind of thought, but I'm really open to what you guys. Just, I thought you were going to, you moved up, so, but anyone can, anyone can share. As I said, we can, yeah, if anyone has any opinion. Other than that, it'd be my recommendation, Tyler Philip, from the existing pool on the fourteenth, or today, or the twenty eighth, since it's been a long meeting and I'm not sure what you want to.
We just recently had someone who expressed an interest in applying for that position as well, that was not in that pool. My feeling is to open it using the same process. You know, a letter of intent, uh what you would bring to the board, that kind of thing. And a CV or something akin to that. And then uh whether you decide to interview one or two candidates, three candidates, whatever. Before you um make that decision.
We won't have, from a pure administrative point of view, we have two, well, not even the two weeks, we don't have another meeting either, so we. It's either, either way, I guess we're voting over today or two weeks' time. But we can't have a, I mean, we could have a meeting, but I don't think anyone wants to have another meeting um this month, so. Yeah, there wouldn't be any additional narrowing the field, I guess, with this mobility to do.
Yeah, that's how we did it with the last one though, so we had people, yeah, they, was it an extra meeting?
Yeah, we did have a couple of meetings.
We did it, one, but when we actually did board selection, people made their presentation. And we voted in the same board meeting.
We did want to narrow it down to. We did one to narrow it down to, up to five, which ended up being four. And then we had another meeting to do after that, to do the selection, the interview had selection, so yes, so. But we can't narrow down the field. What, what I'm saying is you would work, but we can't narrow the field, but, yeah.
Do we know, do we know of any of the finalists that are still interested in the vacancy?
That's the other question.
Yeah, I do think, I've, I have heard from, from multiple that they are, we would obviously ask straight up before we voted as well. Um, I do believe in finalists.
I asked tonight?
That's, I think we did, I, I thought we asked the finalists, I asked.
We, we, we don't have an authority, I mean, we, we, I didn't have that authority from the board to go back and ask, because I don't know what your plan is, so, we have not.
We don't know that, we know that some are interested, but some may not be.
I, you know.
Officially, we don't know.
Yeah, officially, we do not know. I, I, I have, I have a pretty good, but yeah, officially, we do not know.
I would agree with Beth, I think this is one of those, having been through this multiple times on different boards, it's hard to undo this if you don't. Follow the same procedure the next time, and even if we have to accelerate it, at least we've given other people who might want the opportunity to apply for the board. That opportunity to do so, and if they decide not to, or some of the previous candidates decide they don't wanna go through. This vetting process all over again, that's up to them, but I, I, I really think it's important that we are transparent and open this up and don't just.
Yeah.
For expediency's sake, try and go from an existing pool, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, um, you know, these last couple of months have been very challenging, um, obviously, and, um. You know, I felt like, I think, how many did we have the first time? Eleven initially?
Yeah, I think one or two, maybe ten or nine, nine or ten.
And I felt like, you know, I mean, I spent an entire day reading through the CDs and, and reading through all their questions. Um, spent a considerable amount of time and I felt like we had this great pool of candidates, um, to be honest, so much so that. You know, up until, um, Saturday, uh, I would say that I would pull from one of the others that made it to the final four, three, minus Scott. Um, that, um, to try to pull from that group, um, that we'd already narrowed it down. And I mean, that, you know, I know we did just have someone express interest, it's just, um, from a timing perspective. And, I mean, I've attended every committee meeting, it's been very challenging, um. And so, uh, you know, and I don't wanna rush it, it is a very important process, but I felt like we did just go through that and I felt very comfortable. I mean, it was a close vote, uh, the last time. So, um, you know, my, my initial was to sort of offer it to the candidate that had the second highest votes. Um, that was my, my opinion, um.
And I don't think any of the work that you've previously done has to be redone, I mean, you obviously have vetted those candidates, and, and it may be, we have no additional candidates, but at least we've offered. That's, that's, and it's not a hell to die for for me either, I'll go either way, whatever you want.
If we open it up though, we've gotta open it up, I mean, so we could get twenty-five applicants.
So let's, let's start by just saying, I think the obvious is that we should just do this on the twenty eighth, I believe we'll have a full board, I think Josie will be back.
Mm-hmm.
I think I've rearranged my schedule, it's meant to be at a conference, I think I've managed to delay that and I can fly out after the meeting. So, um, if, that's the first point, April twenty eighth, we're pushing to that, we'll, we'll do the decision on April twenty eighth. Now, we can go back to the opening it up. I'm okay, uh, it's also, I'm not gonna die on as well, I, I don't want to, uh. Put people through a process at, at the same time, is that's part of what it is, so I'm okay with whatever, I would prefer to pick from the candidates, but I'm. I'm okay with cliches, I have a way with that, I guess Ty, it sounds like you may be the.
Piebreaker.
Well, I prefer to vote, I guess, it's.
Uh, we will, we will have to have a vote.
Decisions, um, but, you know, obviously, um, you know, I was impressed by Jessica Forster, for sure, um. I know Holly also liked Jessica Forster. I do think to Scott's point, once you go down this path, it's hard to come back, um. And, and the candidate that spoke up on Saturday would also be a quality addition to this body, so, um. Can we open it up and say the deadline's a very short window and we, the questions are ready to go from Tammy? And, and maybe we wanna ask about if they understand the time commitment or if they tend to run in twenty-six versus having everybody having questions back and forth. I think there's a way to streamline it. And the way that we did it with Scott.
We can, and I think now, learning what we've learned, what I would do is ask for more authority to make those decisions, what I believe the board would be, and obviously if I'm wrong, I, I'm sorry, but I, uh. That's where the, the difficulty came before is I need very specific scope.
I think, I think what Ty is saying is, is, so let me give you a, I think what you're saying, Ty, and tell me if you, if I'm right. We can take the questions that the board asked all the candidates, put those into a questionnaire. Anybody that shows within a week that they have an interest, that we would send that to them, have them answer it, send it to the board. And then at the next meeting, the board looks at all of them and goes, we appoint so and so.
Yeah, that's right.
Am I looking at that correctly?
So there's no statement, there's no.
No interviews, you have that element of that and then the board can make their call. That's what I think Ty is saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he was too, and I, I guess, yeah, we can, actually, that would be the way to go, but we also have to go into like, I guess we've covered most of it in that summary.
And you already have a process pretty well defined.
So basically.
Any of the corresponding documents.
So that would be, so that would be the, I guess.
And I think that people that are submitted before, that they wouldn't have to resend what we already asked. We would just send to anybody new those things plus the additional questions that were in the interviews. Ask them to fill all that, as we get them, Tammy, I'll send them to the board. And you guys, whenever you wanna make a decision, make a decision, but I think that's what Ty is proposing at this point, so.
So we would contact all the people that initially and just ask if they're still interested. And tell them we'll leave it as stands unless they have anything to add.
Yeah, and theoretically, they can either, yeah, if they have anything to add, they could, if they weren't asked a question where one of the other ones was, they can fill in the blank, um.
And, and my understanding is, under what Ty is proposing is, it'd be posted probably for a week for any new.
I would say a week, yeah, yeah, but responses, so we, let's say we posted it tomorrow, which I think we probably could do.
Yeah, we, we can pull that.
Um, and then we left it open for a week, then that's the deadline.
Director, can I just for clarification, because I don't know, um, from what I'm hearing, are you contacting all of the candidates that previously applied?
Yep.
Or just the, the, all of them?
All that previously applied.
And part of the reasoning of that is like the board, even the finalists, I, you know, I, I voted in a way to fill the board need. Um, which may be different now, like it's, um.
I just wanted to put that up for clarification, they weren't just contacting.
Did I just want to put that I have no skin in this game whatsoever and have no authority in any way, I'm just clarifying, I think Ty offered.
No, I like that, no, yeah, I, I like that, I mean.
So do what you would like.
You're the translator, it's funny.
Yeah, right.
Just try to make sure I understand it.
You, you summaries are good and it's simplified in my mind, it's been a long night, so, so we will, so we will post it tomorrow, we'll have it open for one week. We'll ask all, we'll ask the questions we asked previously, along with any of the clarifying questions we've had, anyone can add to it or obviously apply. Um, we will, uh, on the twenty eighth, we add it to the agenda, will probably be the first discussion item, or we do it like we did before, where we'd be the, one of the first items, we can figure that out in exact.
And so I'm just, you know, asking at this point, it would be okay to amend that agenda then for the study session to add that?
Yep.
So Tammy can do that tomorrow?
So it's what we, it's study session. Um, so we want to make it as quick, because we, obviously important work on study sessions, we'd also amend the agenda on that. And then I would do the voting the way we did it before, where it's a, a first, second, third, three, two, one, you can vote for one, you can vote for two, you can vote for three, it's up to you.
Could we ask that people, um, turn in any information they wanted to share with the board by the twenty fifth? And that way you have everything in, you don't have actually things coming up right, in case you.
Hate to do it just on one day, because then if someone's got like a weekend.
Okay.
Such as.
No, I think we would say the twenty second. If we have a full week.
That's what I'm saying, is, I think Beth was pushing it back.
No, you, you, and as we get them, Tammy, we'll put them in the, in the, in the folder. But we will ask them to have it completed no later than close of business on the twenty second.
And I did, is that what, 'cause I thought you were trying to push it back, Beth, and I don't wanna push it back because of the weekend.
I would emphasize in the communications, a short window, they've got to respond to this.
Yep.
I don't want somebody saying, wow, I didn't even know about it, you know.
Right.
We'll get it out there.
I talked to one of the people in the clerk's office and he said, what are you guys gonna do? He said, we're getting questions at the clerk's office and how they're gonna fill the school board. And I told him, I said, well, we'll decide that one day.
You talking about Ben, the mayor in Ted's office, the city clerk?
City clerk.
Okay, yeah, see, that's what I mean, I, I just don't wanna be accused.
But to be clear to everybody is, you know, the only rules the board has is that they have to appoint somebody and it has to be within thirty days.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it goes to the ISD board to make the decision, other than that, that's all there is, so.
Which we have until the, I believe, the twenty ninth, so, um.
We do those correctly.
So even if there was an emergency on the twenty eighth, though, we could have this, I don't, it actually, but either way, we're good. Right now, barring no crazy events on the twenty eighth. Um, always makes me worried with the year and two that we've had, so.
And once you're done with that, and we do have a clarification on that building, Christine, we'll get.
The total is forty-five hundred square feet.
Forty-five hundred.
Okay. It's about a hundred and eighty-six dollars a square foot.
Yeah, it's cheaper to build a barn, middle barn.
Yeah, but you've got climate control, but, um, but, but, hold on, so just to close out, so there's no more questions, then we can close that one, uh. So everything's done, we're gonna post it tomorrow, it's gonna be open for a week, we're gonna send out the same questions, they can respond, anyone can additionally respond. We're gonna, they're gonna vote on the twenty eighth, it's gonna be one, it's gonna be the first thing we do, because it is a study session, so we'll just be immediately going into that. We do a, we do the same thing, no presentations, a three, two, one vote, summarize, top vote again.
Bingo.
All right.
And obviously, the candidates that have been through this process, the first time they ever decided to dance, because they have done presentations, we do know.
Yep.
And so, I'm, I'm, yep, there at this point, I don't think, I'm sorry, it needs a little more work, not a lot more.
No, and I, I think that's a fair compliment, so. Depending on, um.
Scott, can I just clarify, so you want the answers to the questions by the twenty second?
Yes.
Yes.
Fifteen, twenty second, yeah.
So we'll post it tomorrow, as soon as they give me their information, I'll give them the questions, we need everybody's questions by the twenty second.
Yep, and, yep, and the questions would just have what we sent before, plus.
The questions from the video.
The questions that were answered that were by the board.
Okay.
And obviously, there's a couple of ones that were worded slightly differently, we're just streamlining those to be one.
And that's a high and fast deadline, correct? We're not gonna, my dog died.
Scott, are you gonna reach out to the, the previous board members?
I think, Tammy, you could just reach out and just say.
Yeah, I'm gonna say.
You'll have all their, like, 'cause I don't have.
All their contacts.
All their, I mean, their CV and all their questions, okay, 'cause I don't have mine anymore.
Yep, so they have to, um, yeah. So they can just leave it, they can leave it as is, or they can, if they didn't, like, again, we asked a couple of questions to one person and not another, so if they wanna fill in that gap, they can. All right. Okay, thank you, and, uh, so we will, I don't think, there's no motion, uh, needed for that, we would put down the twenty eighth. Um, so that was the last discussion item, there is no additional public comment. Um, my board closing remarks, this has been a long meeting, so I'm not gonna make any, and do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
From all.
All right.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, meeting adjourned.